will begin with presentations. Our first presentation is by Councilmember Wendy Grul.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Appreciate us being able to honor someone today and ask, we get everyone's attention in the chambers. I know if Councilmember Perry and Parks arrive, I'd like them to join me this morning. Like to acknowledge a very special person that I knew a little bit about, but this week I learned a lot more at the California Women's Law Center luncheon where he was honored, and that is Rodrick Jackson. Rodrick is the girls' basketball coach at Enslie High School in Birmingham, Alabama. He has shown unparalleled dedication to opportunities for girls by refusing to ignore the discrepancies in the way that the school treated the girls' and the boys' teams. He called attention to the fact that the girls' team never received money donated to the school's athletic program by the city of Birmingham and were not allowed to keep the money they raised from admission for their games and their concession stand. Coach Jackson's team, women's team, was forced to play in the old, unheated and non-regulated-sized gym while the boys' team was allowed to practice in the school's new gym. His players were not provided transportation to their games, making it impossible for many of the students to attend all of their scheduled away games. Despite the fact that his actions caused him, his job in 2004, he still took his case all the way to the Supreme Court and won the right for coaches to be protected under the Title IX retaliation for opposing discrimination against their teams. Coach Jackson's determination to fight for girls' rights in sports has opened the doors to coaches across America and enabled them to stand up and demand for fair and equal treatment for female athletes without the fear of losing their jobs. The United States Supreme Court's ruling in Jackson's case has become a beacon of hope for girls' sports and a catalyst for Title IX causes across the country, including the Los Angeles-based California Women's Law Centers' fight for parity in our local school districts. I'd like to ask before I introduce Coach Jackson to have Katie Buckland, a familiar face in our community here and then the city of Los Angeles, who is somewhat the new executive director, it's been a few months of the California Women's Law Center. Katie?
Thank you so much for that kind introduction. And I have to say, it is just fabulous to be back and see so many familiar faces. So I just wanted to add a few words about the history of Title IX and a little bit about what the Law Center is currently doing on that issue. As many of you know, Title IX passed about 33 years ago, and before Title IX passed, only one in five girls participated in sports. Now, when you look at the little girls, the four-year-olds playing soccer, three out of five of them start. And sports really empowers girls in a way that no other activity does. It makes them stronger by any possible measure. More girls that participate in sports graduate from both high school and college. Fewer of them become pregnant. Fewer of them suffer from eating disorders and depression. So what Coach Jackson has done by taking his case to the Supreme Court is allowed coaches to come forward and complain when they see violations of Title IX. And that's something the Law Center litigates very aggressively. I'm pleased to say, not against the city of Los Angeles for many, many years, but against many of the other smaller cities in our community. So it's with great pleasure that I stand here today introducing Coach Jackson.
Thank you. Let's give, he's our hero across this country, Coach Jackson.
Good morning. Thank you so much for the very kind words to the council, President Protem, Grul, to the council and the mayor, and the wonderful citizens of Los Angeles. I just want to thank you for this honor and means a lot to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
He's a very humble man, you can see. He's made a big difference across this country. Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas, and I know we'll switch places because you have your presentation next.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Labonge?
Coach, great to see you, and Katie Buckland, great to see you. I think you all know Devin Scott Rosenheim, Brad Rosenheim's wife. I don't know if you may recall her, but she was an aide to Cindy Misakowski and Peggy Stevenson for years ago and worked for the mayor, Reardon, at the time. But 33 years ago, she was an excellent athlete, but she played on the boys' basketball team for John Marshall High, playing against Eagle Rock. And they were going to, big lawyers downtown, all guys, were going to forfeit the game because a girl couldn't play with boys. And out of that whole incident in Los Angeles here, someone who was part of our city family helped forge the way, as you, Coach, forged the way too, in girls' basketball programs here in Los Angeles. So with your story and what Wendy recalled and with the remarks about Katie, how important music, art, and dance and athletics is to the development of young people, I see our fine captain shaking his head saying, yes, it's the right way to go. And so the more you could do it, the better, for more sports fields, more gymnasiums, and more joint use, and more play for young men and women. I just want to thank you, Wendy, for bringing the coach here, and Katie for being here as well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next presentation will have by Councilman Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Los Angeles ought to be very, very proud. We're a very innovative city. We're a city that has a lot of issues that we try to tackle as best we can every single day. And today, we're going to recognize the Police Department of Los Angeles and also many community members as well, and appreciate their effort and support in working together. Can we have all of you come up, please? Everybody who's involved, so we can show the people of Los Angeles how easy it is to get all of you together to do the right thing and to work on improving the community for everyone of Los Angeles.
Where's Lucy? Lucy?
Thank you very much. The LA Police Department just recently got recognized with an International Association of Chiefs' Police Award. They actually beat out Boston and also Northern Ireland for this award. Again, it's an international award, and it's presented at the annual 2005 Community Policing Award in recognition of outstanding community policing practices by agencies representing jurisdictions of all sizes. So we didn't just get it because we're a big city, we got it because we're the best city. The Los Angeles Police Department received this award in recognition for their job in tackling the staggering gang problem in the San Fernando Valley. The Los Angeles Police Department prevailed over both Boston, as I said before, and also Northern Ireland and many other police departments throughout the world to get this recognition. They got it because they did something unique, they did something innovative, and they are effective. For example, the LA Police Department has formed a partnership with local political bodies, governmental agencies, and community grassroots and faith-based organizations, including organizations that are formed by ex-gang members who are trying to make sure that that recidivism within those families and those communities does not continue. The Coalition focuses on providing resources and developing strategies. Psychology college student, excuse me, their efforts include creating a community resource guide, pairing local sociology and psychology college students with at-risk youth for mentoring and hosting events that incorporate sports, competitions between officers and gang members. With that, I'd like to recognize the department, and I'd like to bring forward someone who was with us as one of our Assistant Chiefs, and that's former Assistant Chief Bergman.
No uniform today.
I'd just like to clarify one point. Tony promoted me to Assistant Chief, and there is an Assistant Chief here, Sharon Papa, representing the department. I retired about four months ago, and I went to Miami to receive the award on behalf of the Los Angeles Police Department and the San Fernando Valley Coalition on Gangs. This is the award. We were the only ones that prevailed in cities over 250,000. There are other awards for smaller cities, but out of the big cities, we had the best submission, we had the best program. And I know Councilman Cardenas and some of you on the council are pushing not only a consulting contract to deal with gang strategies in the city of Los Angeles, but also a city department to deal with gangs. I personally think that's a good idea. Councilman Cardenas has my support. I'd like to see that come into being because gangs have historically been talked about as the number-one problem in the city of Los Angeles. But up until now, no one really has said it's a number-one problem that needs a solution. So this is a great award for the city and the department. I was happy to come here this morning out of retirement, and I'm going to do everything I can to help Councilman Cardenas and the San Fernando Valley Coalition on Gangs to continue their good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, and I'd like to call forward to accept this award as well, representing the department and also Chief Bratton, Assistant Chief Sheriff Papa.
Thank you. Thank you, thanks for coming.
Thank you, Councilman. You know, it's very appropriate that Ron Bergman be standing here and that he got to go to Miami to accept this award because we know that we would not have gotten this recognition if it wasn't for all of his hard work. So Ron, thank you for what you did, and to the Coalition members because it truly is a partnership with people working together that made this happen. So we're very thrilled to have received this award, and we appreciate the council taking the time to recognize it as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Chief Moore? We have Assistant Chief Moore here and also Gascon, are you here?
Chief Moore is on vacation.
Oh, he's on vacation, okay. He deserved it. He deserves it. Commander Panacea, want to say a few words? Do you know something about this program?
Yeah, I was sort of on the ground level with Chief Bergman when we started this. I'd like to thank the council for recognizing us and honoring us, but I'd like also to thank the many members of the community that are here today, Chambers of Commerce, nonprofit organizations, and involved and concerned citizens, as well as the council medic officers that have participated faithfully over the last number of years. So thank you, this is a joint award, it's not just LAPD being recognized here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to invite somebody to say a few words because, as was mentioned earlier, this is about a coalition, not only of law enforcement, but a coalition of people who are from the valley and live in the valley and who've experienced at every level what it is to live in a community where gangs are an issue. I'd like to invite Blinkie Rodriguez to come forward.
I'd like to say, what I'm hoping that what is going on here today is not taken lightly or for granted. This is a culmination of many, many, many years. Captain Zomanski, Miller, I look at the different COs that are here and the chiefs, and this has taken a lot of work. The Coalition, you have Ann Kinsel here, she's 78 years old, and this woman's out there doing work in the community. I hope to live to be 78 years old, and little alone do what she does as a part of this Coalition. This is something unique. Hey, we're talking about saving lives. City, please, this is something very, very unique. When we did that first game with LAPD was on the infield, and I know Lieutenant Nansen's here, and he's head of the gang unit overall for the valley. It took for these COs and the lieutenants to also begin to buy into the vision and begin to breathe that vision down through their ranks so that we as communities and schools as a part of the Coalition, with the Bridges Two Department we have over hardcore gang, could be more effective in the trenches, and it's about saving lives. You know, sometimes we can become Pollyannish and callous, and we're going to deal with the gang thing, but you're looking at a group of people here that have truly looked at what is the greater good? How do we get to outcomes that is going to save lives so that we don't have that blood running down the gutters in our city? The howling cries of a mom. We have to be careful, so that's why I take a lot of excitement right now in being able to share these few words because it truly boils down to leadership, and leadership that has been prepared, not only in the theory of it, but stepping out on the branch to make something unique happen. Captain Albanese, I want to tell you, I appreciate you. Sergeant Artest, we've come to know people in law enforcement that have gone beyond the call to make this happen, and again, I just want to, I want to thank you, Tony, for letting me share a few words, and you, bro, I mean, you've gone way beyond with AB-1913. There's a lot, I mean, of substance here. This isn't something that just happened in a vacuum. There's a lifetime of work going on here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have a couple councilmembers. I don't know if this is the appropriate time, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Zine followed by Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning and good morning, retired constituent of the 3rd District, Ron Bergman.
I'm keeping an eye on you.
I know you're keeping an eye on me. When we were Tollywood together and I was a sergeant, you were the P2, I was keeping an eye on you, and there you rose up the ladder. I still remember the meetings that we had at the church on Sherman Way, was church on the way when you first formed this?
They're still happening.
They're still happening, and how we brought it, you, Chief Bergman, brought it all together. And you were tenacious, you were persistent. Blinkie, you were there with Bobby and the crew, and you did not relent, you continued with the program. And there were some days that were bright and some days that weren't so bright, but if it wasn't for the leadership of Chief Bergman and the inspiration, desire to bring all the aspects of the community together, you wouldn't have received that award. So I want to acknowledge all of you, the receipt of folks that are here, the folks from all the San Fernando Valley and law enforcement people that are here, all of you, working together to make this happen. So I want to congratulate each and every one of you. It's a wonderful program, a wonderful award, and Tony, thanks for bringing them forward. And Ron, I hope you enjoy your retirement. I know you're cruising around that, shall we say, indistinguishable automobile. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for your leadership on this. And Ron Bergman, congratulations again on your four-month of retirement. I don't know if this is the first day you had a tie-on, but you're here, which is good, and you're contributing, which is so important. But behind you are the great contributors, the ones who stepped up and said, let's partner with the city of Los Angeles, let's partner with the Police Department. We're all in it together, and nothing is more worse when you get a call from a family member about someone who dies naturally. That's terrible. But then someone who dies in an unnatural way by violence is horrible, and it's just ripped out. And I just wanted to stand to salute all of you, Blinkie, and everybody there, and the great women of the northeast San Fernando Valley who were there. And every day is a challenge, and from this success, there will be other successes. It's good to get this award and recognition. But yesterday I was down at the Coliseum at an emergency preparedness drill, and I talked to Captain Craig, your colleague there at Southwest, and there was a 14-year-old going to, not a church fair, but a community fair, and somebody walked up to him and asked him, where are you from? And that young man has lost his life for no reason, and I know that's happened so many times. And I think, as was the previous recognition that Ms. Grul gave to the great coach and the work of trying to get more people involved in sports and athletics and art and dance, it's better to swing a bat than to swing a fist. And we know how bad it is when you have other things, like act for violence. I just wanted to thank you guys back there. I thank these guys all the time with the city of Los Angeles, the Police Department, thank you, and call on us and put the pressure on us, too, put the pressure on us and push the people, you know, we're talking about dropping out of school, try to drop up, not drop out, and make a way, make a difference, because you know how tough it is for you personally now, all the time, and working together will make it better for all of us in our communities. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Congratulations on the award that all of you have received, and working together makes a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Once again, this is a well-deserved award, but none of this kind of work goes without pain and skepticism. There was a lot of skepticism that this would even work, that it would even last a week. It's lasted over four years now, and this is something that is well-deserved, and it's only appropriate that this wonderful city recognize its constituents and Police Department for the wonderful collaboration that has set the bar for the entire nation on how to work through the issues of gangs. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and a special thank you to all of the group of people that are here, and the officers, and Blinkie, everyone. I've had the pleasure to attend.
running down the gutters in our city? The howling cries of a mom. We have to be careful, so that's why I take a lot of excitement right now in being able to share these few words because it truly boils down to leadership, and leadership that has been prepared, not only in the theory of it, but stepping out on the branch to make something unique happen. Captain Albanese, I want to tell you I appreciate you. Sergeant Artest, we've come to know people in law enforcement that have gone beyond the call to make this happen, and again, I just want to thank you, Tony, for letting me share a few words, and you, bro. I mean, you've gone way beyond with AB-1913. There's a lot, I mean, of substance here. This isn't something that just happened in a vacuum. There's a lifetime of work going on here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we have a couple council members. I don't know if this is the appropriate time, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Zine followed by Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning and good morning, retired constituent of the 3rd District, Ron Bergman.
I'm keeping an eye on you.
I know you're keeping an eye on me. When we were Tollywood together and I was the sergeant, you were the P2, I was keeping an eye on you, and there you rose up the ladder. I still remember the meetings that we had at the church on Sherman Way. Was church on the way when you first formed this?
They're still happening.
They're still happening, and how we brought it, you, Chief Bergman, brought it all together. And you were tenacious, you were persistent. Blinkie, you were there with Bobby and the crew, and you did not relent. You continued with the program. And there were some days that were bright and some days that weren't so bright, but if it wasn't for the leadership of Chief Bergman and the inspiration, desire to bring all the aspects of the community together, you wouldn't have received that award. So I want to acknowledge all of you, the recita folks that are here, the folks from all of the San Fernando Valley and law enforcement people that are here, all of you working together to make this happen. So I want to congratulate each and every one of you. It's a wonderful program, a wonderful award, and Tony, thanks for bringing them forward. And Ron, I hope you enjoy your retirement. I know you're cruising around that, shall we say, indistinguish automobile. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for your leadership on this. And Ron Bergman, congratulations again on your four-month of retirement. I don't know if this is the first day you had a tie-on, but you're here, which is good, and you're contributing, which is so important. But behind you are the great contributors, the ones who stepped up and said, let's partner with the city of Los Angeles, let's partner with the police department. We're all in it together, and nothing is more worse when you get a call from a family member about someone who dies naturally. That's terrible. But then someone who dies in an unnatural way by violence is horrible, and it's just ripped out. And I just wanted to stand to salute all of you, Blinkie, and everybody there, and the great women of the northeast San Fernando Valley who were there. And every day is a challenge, and from this success, there will be other successes. It's good to get this award and recognition. But yesterday I was down at the Coliseum at an emergency preparedness drill, and I talked to Captain Craig, your colleague there at Southwest, and there was a 14-year-old going to not a church fair, but a community fair, and somebody walked up to him and asked him, where are you from? And that young man has lost his life for no reason, and I know that's happened so many times. And I think, as was the previous recognition that Ms. Gruel gave to the great coach and the work of trying to get more people involved in sports and athletics and art and dance, it's better to swing a bat than to swing a fist. And we know how bad it is when you have other things that act for violence. I just wanted to thank you guys back there. I thank these guys all the time with the city of Los Angeles, the police department, thank you, and call on us and put the pressure on us, too, put the pressure on us and push the people. You know, we talk about dropping out of school, try to drop up, not drop out, and make a way, make a difference, because you know how tough it is for you personally now, all the time, and working together will make it better for all of us in our communities. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Congratulations on the award that all of you have received, and working together makes a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Once again, this is a well-deserved award, but none of this kind of work goes without pain and skepticism. There was a lot of skepticism that this would even work, that it would even last a week. It's lasted over four years now, and this is something that is well-deserved, and it's only appropriate that this wonderful city recognize its constituents and police department for the wonderful collaboration that has set the bar for the entire nation on how to work through the issues of gangs. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and a special thank you to all of the group of people that are here, and the officers, and Blinkie, everyone. I've had the pleasure to attend some of the meetings of the coalition. It's been an excellent, I think, vehicle to help address the issue of gangs. So congratulations to all of you. Our next introduction will be by Councilmember Bill Rosendahl, and we're joined by our illustrious mayor, Antonio Villarosa. Almost ready. Please, Mr. Rosendahl. We're ready.
Yes, Madam President, thank you for giving us this opportunity. On November the 20th, the late Senator Robert F. Kennedy would have been 80 years old. This is the Kennedy Week throughout the nation discussing and reflecting on his leadership, his vision, and the incredible inspiration he was to a cross-section of Americans. He was a coalition builder. He was a man who could bring people together and get people inspired and focused. I personally was a graduate student at the University of Pittsburgh, and I heard his clarion call. He was running for president of the United States. I went to work for him in Indiana, got to know him. We won Indiana real big, and we were very excited. Went on to Portland, Oregon, and was with him in this great city at the end of his life in June of 1968. We're commemorating his 80th birthday because he has been an inspiration for me. I would not be on the city council if it wasn't for him. I always carried in my heart and in my soul his messages that we can do better, and we can make the world a better place, and that we can step up to these issues and we can solve them. So it's a great honor for me to be able to be here and to talk about them. I'd like to introduce our great mayor, Antonio Villarosa.
Good morning, everybody. It's with deep respect and profound gratitude that after 37 years with a lingering sense of pain and loss, that we offer this proclamation to the Kennedy family, designating this week as Robert F. Kennedy Week in Los Angeles. As we gather here to remember your father and celebrate the 80th year of his birth, it's only fitting that we recall the stirring admonition delivered at his burial by his brother Ted, who asked us to remember Bobby Kennedy simply as a man and to avoid idealizing or enlarging his brother in death beyond what he was in life. I think I can safely say, for most Americans, certainly for myself, that it's very difficult to heed that advice. After 40 years, I think we all still feel that sense of loss, that idealism, the optimism, the hope, this sense of the possible that Bobby Kennedy personified and in many ways was all about. I think we all still feel the pain of his absence today with an astonishing sense of immediacy, because what we lost in Bobby Kennedy was so much larger than the life of a single man. We lost our connection to a time when our politics were not about cynicism, but about hope, when we measured ourselves as a people against our biggest challenges, when we truly believed as Americans that it was possible to stop war and poverty, and when leaders like Bobby Kennedy challenged us to make our public debates not about appeals to the lowest common denominator, but about a call to the highest ideals. And we bestow this honor, I think, we must ask ourselves what Bobby Kennedy would say today about the city where he gave his life, a city where half of our children drop out before they reach graduation, where we have more homeless than any other city in America, and where so many of us go about our lives numb to the glaring reality of the nation's most glaring extremes of wealth and poverty. It was Bobby Kennedy who inspired us that it was possible to take on these large challenges. And I think all of us today are inspired still by what Bobby Kennedy was all about. And so I am deeply honored today to acknowledge this week with Councilmember Rosendahl as Robert F. Kennedy Week, a week when we remember him, his life, his ideals, his words, his inspiration. But I think those who have worked to continue his memory would also say, and if Bobby Kennedy were here, he would say, don't just remember me, do something about it. Do something to change the world and make it a little better. Be willing to take on those challenges that most of us think are insurmountable, but he believed were possible. And so today, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we acknowledge this week as Robert F. Kennedy Week. We are inspired by his memory and committed to his goals. On behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we'd like to extend this proclamation to the entire family, this beautiful family. Give it to you, Max.
Thanks so much. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and Mr. Rosendahl, to the Kennedy family, thank you. Your brother Joseph was out here with the mayor, and Mr. Cardenas just the other day on Citizen Energy on transmission for a very important program to clean air and bring in power to help people who need help. But your father, of all, I believe, of all American figures, including his brother John, but your father in living that time was an absolute inspiration to millions of people across all of America. And it was a very bad day in Los Angeles on that day, but it's a very great day that we think of the Kennedy family as we do today, and the impact the Kennedy family has had throughout the communities, not just in our country, but around the world. I just wanted to stand and salute the Kennedy family. Just recently, we tore down the old city hospital where your father was first taken after that tragic night, and there was a logbook, and it was written in ink, and no computers back then, but it talked about how all the nurses and the doctors by name tried to help and save your father and tried to show the care and love that was needed in that time of that terrible tragedy. And it was an interesting part of our history, recorded in just a simple journal on Sixth Street, just east of the Ambassador Hotel. But thank you, the Kennedy family. And Mr. Mayor, I hope you order them up to the top of this grand city hall, because it's such a beautiful day. If you get on your tippy toes, maybe you could see Boston. Okay, welcome back always. Congratulations to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Labange. I'd like to take this point of personal privilege, chairing this meeting at this moment, to just say thank you for the work that you do and the spirit and the efforts that you continue on behalf of this country. You come from a very well-recognized family and well-deserved of the accolades that you and your family have received. One of my proudest moments, having been on this earth, was just the other day when I stood with the mayor and your brother Joseph Kennedy, the former congressman, and I thought of my parents, who are Mexican immigrants, Irish immigrant family, Irish-American family, to think that my parents would look down on one of their 11 kids, Mexican-American family, 11 kids, and see one of them standing shoulder to shoulder, working together to try to improve the environment for all of us and for the future generations. I just wanted to say it's an honor to have you in our chambers, and you deserve this accolade and this honor, and it's wonderful to see you, and thank you for gracing us with your presence. Thank you.
Sure. But they're going to talk first, and then we're going to...
Any words?
I think...
I'm sorry, the names aren't showing up on the screen.
What we're going to do first is let everybody know that the Kennedy family lives in the 11th district in the Pacific Palisades, and they are constituents in that district, and they're great contributors to the community in Los Angeles. They are involved in lots of issues, and I'd like to take this as a moment to have Max say something, but I just want to acknowledge Paul Schrade, who's standing in the back. Paul is a top labor leader who was very close to Senator Kennedy and is very close to the Kennedy family, and it's great to have you here, Paul. Okay? Max, please.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I really can't thank this council and the mayor enough for honoring my father in this way, and I'm really grateful. I just want to introduce my daughter Noah, who's seven years old, and my daughter Summer, and my son Maxi, and especially my wife, Vicky. So, thank you. I've come from an Irish Catholic family, so I'm ninth of 11 children, and as I say, really grateful. My father loved Los Angeles. He read a book when he was a child called Two Years Before the Mass, and it was about a kid from Boston who came out to LA and was able to reinvent himself. And my father really believed that this was a city where you were judged on your character and your actions rather than who your family was or how you were born or your religion. And I think that he would feel incredibly hopeful if he were here today. He would be so excited about this mayor and the work that lies ahead. There were, you know, my father, there were three words that my father said that I think really symbolized his life, and that was, we can do better. We can do better. And it was both a challenge and it was a reflection of the times. You know, my father came from a very well-to-do family. His brother was the president. He was one of the most powerful men in the country, chief law enforcement officer. And when he stood with Cesar Chavez, when he sat with Chavez and they broke bread together, that was a moment that I think really symbolizes the hope of California and the leadership that this state can offer and that you guys are offering, and I'm grateful, you know, that you remembered this. We thought it was just a day. I can't believe it's a whole week, but thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Labange.
If I could, with the mayor's approval, just so that you know, you got free admission to the family for the zoo anytime for the year. Just call me. And also, I gave this to your brother Joseph. This is a loaf of pumpkin bread. I don't know if you get that far east on Sunset, but below the Hollywood sign, there's a great monastery with the monastery of the angels. These nuns break this. The Kennedy family, all of you are angels in the seed of angels. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move to our next presentation.
Thank you. So we're going to...
Our next presentation, Councilmember Smith. Do you have a presentation today?
Yes, members of council, we're very fortunate to have visiting us today a delegation from Shanghai, China, and Guangzhou, who are here with the California State University at Northridge, which has a wonderful program of exchange of scholar and of business leaders. Also included in the audience today are a number of public officials from Shanghai, China, visiting us today. We have a longstanding relationship, and I'd like you all to stand and say hello. It's Dr. Su from Cal State Northridge and the delegation from Shanghai and Guangzhou. Welcome to Los Angeles. Enjoy your stay here today.
Okay. Our next presentation by Councilmember Wendy Gruel.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm so pleased to stand here today with a gentleman who is no stranger to this council chambers and to activism, but we're here today to honor Ken McAlpine, who's a lifelong resident of Sunland Tahunga. He's a graduate of Reduga Hills High School and holds a bachelor's degree in computer science from California State University, Northridge, and also attended classes at the master ceremony, seminary, excuse me. Ken has been a software engineer for the past 13 years and has held management positions at internet divisions of two of the world's premier entertainment companies, Warner Brothers and Disney. And that says a lot when I'm from DreamWorks, and I can say that. For three and a half years, Ken served as chairman of the Sunland Tahunga Neighborhood Council, and as a founding member and key financial supporter of the council, he worked on the projects, committees, and initiatives to numerous to count. He helped guide the organization through times of great success as well as great times of difficulty. Ken has also been active and led local youth groups and many, such as Iwana Clubs, Children's Choir, and the Boy Scouts. Currently, he teaches Sunday School to children in grades K through 12. He's a member also of the Sunland Tahunga Chamber of Commerce. Ken and his wife Brenda have three wonderful children, Lori, Drew, and Christie, and they all live in Sunland. I'm just pleased because I met Ken when I was running for office, and he was one of those people who was a tough negotiator, someone who was fighting for the community to make sure that they were going to get their fair share, that they were given the appropriate attention, and I'm just so pleased to be here today to honor him with representatives from the neighborhood council who are here with us today, and it looks like they have a presentation. And Louise, who was president of the neighborhood council, if I could ask her to say a few words before we make the formal presentation of Ken.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure serving with Ken on the board. He taught me a lot, and I was so thrilled to work with him for two years. I can't imagine having to work under anyone else, and I thank you for honoring him.
Thank you. Thank you. So if we could give Ken a great round of applause and thank him for his years of service to Sunland Tahunga community, and particularly to the wonderful Sunland Tahunga Neighborhood Council.
It's a little different. Usually when I'm standing at this mic, I'm asking for recognition for our community and our neighborhood council on our issues. It's just going to need to get recognition for myself and also for our neighborhood council and all the good work that's been done. I want to thank Wendy Gruel for the work that she's done in our community.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Appreciate everyone having the opportunity to acknowledge Ken, and we know that his continued participation in this community is going to be a wonderful asset for Sunland Tahunga. So thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. We'll go in the back. We'll take a picture. Oh, yeah. Oh, you're welcome. Okay. Ken will always be our favorite chair at Sunland Tahunga Neighborhood Council, and so we would like to give him this gavel with the seal of the city of Los Angeles so he can pound on the city all he wants, and it has his name. And Wendy, we have a newly published book in our community, and I'd like to present you with an autographed copy from the 2005 Sunland Tahunga Neighborhood Council.
Great. Madam President, it is... Madam President, it is Founding Sisters, and the life stories of Tahunga's early women pioneers. So, thank you.
Girls rule.
Thank you. Girls rule. Thank you. We're going to go in the back, take pictures.
Thank you. And I believe Councilmember Reyes, you're up for the next presentation. Yes?
Our guests are due to arrive, so maybe we can move to the next.
All right. The next one is Councilmember Parks. You're on.
I'd like to introduce everyone to a young lady that we are absolutely very proud of in the City of Los Angeles. Even though she's a 10th district resident, we've stolen her because Herb's not here to protect himself, but she is recently crowned as Miss California, USA 2006, and that's Tamiko Nash. And I'd like to ask her parents to come up, William and Felicia, come and stand at the podium with her. And she is the 55th Miss California, USA, and only the third African American to hold that title. As Miss California, USA, Ms. Nash raises awareness of the beauty of California, a state initiative that recognizes diversity and the spirit of California. She's earned her bachelor's degree in Child and Family Development from San Diego State. My son went to San Diego State. He was there for eight years before he found out it was a four-year college. Upon graduation, she served as an elementary school teacher at Bird Rock Elementary in La Jolla, California, and she currently works for the Recording Academy, which is known worldwide for its Grammy Awards. She devotes much of her time to philanthropic work, focusing on family and children development organizations, and as a volunteer with the 1736 Domestic Violence Family Crisis Center, which is just outside of the 8th district. She frequently works with young children who are victims or have been exposed to domestic violence. She's a native of the City of Los Angeles, is very family-oriented, and is the most content spending time with her family, whether it be taking a trip or sitting around the kitchen, sharing a meal, and getting lost in the constant laughter or banter that hallmarks her family gatherings. She's always dreamed of becoming Miss California, USA, and ultimately, Miss USA. Earning the coveted title of Miss USA affords her the perfect opportunity to represent the beauty of California, its diversity, its intrigue, and its uniqueness. She represents the state of California as she competes for the title of Miss USA during the live NBC telecast in March 2006. We wanted to bring her here, not only to give her our well wishes, but also to let her know that we are supporting her, and hopefully, if it's a vote by email, that each and every one of us will flood that machine to make sure that she is given the proper due, that she's expected, and representing the state of California. So, Ms. Nash, thank you for being here. I want to say, on behalf of the city council, we thank the world of you and we wish the best of luck in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Los Angeles City Council and Councilwoman Parks for this honor and recognition. I am born and raised in Los Angeles, and while I do represent the state of California, most importantly, I represent this great city. I'm here with my parents, my family, but I'd like, with your permission, to adopt you as my extended family. Again, I am just so excited and so honored to be here, and again, to represent our city and our state, and thank you for having me. Thank you.
We're going to go back and take another photograph. Okay? Or we just go back through here?
Thank you very much. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Reyes for our presentation. We'll go ahead and start the business of the meeting today. They're here. Okay. Great. Colleagues, this is our last presentation this morning, so we will take order of business after this.
Good morning, colleagues, councilmembers. Madam President, today I have the honor of welcoming the executive director of the Elizabeth Health Center for Cancer Detection, Mr. Don Cook, to our chambers. Don Cook served three years on the executive committee of Elizabeth Center for Cancer Detection. He was appointed CEO December 1st, 2001. In his role as CEO, he directs the day-to-day operation of the center. He also fills the marketing director position, under which he handles the marketing of the center's outreach, screening services, including the center's medical van. Currently, the center is seeing about 1,100 patients per month, which is equally to approximately 13,000 patients. But Mr. Cooks has larger goals for the Elizabeth Center for Cancer Detection. Indeed, it is this hope that they will be able to nearly double their current volume of patients to 25,000, who will be screened each year through growth in the central clinic and through the center's outreach program. For those of you who may not know, the Elizabeth Center for Cancer Detection was founded by Dr. Elizabeth Mason Ho, M.D., in 1944 to promote earlier detection of many late-stage cancer patients she was seeing in her practice. The center was first named the Cancer Prevention Society in the 1970s with the advent of mammography. The organization was renamed the Cancer Detection Center to more accurately reflect its changing mission. Finally, in 2003, the organization was renamed Elizabeth Center for Cancer Detection to recognize its founder in the 60th year of operation. Elizabeth Center is on Third Street, just west of the 110 Harbor Freeway, between South Bixil and South Bowdery Avenue in my district. The center offers affordable screening programs designed to detect cancer at its earliest stage. This is a vitally important service to our community that is so often neglected, and it is my hope that bringing attention to its location and existence will encourage our residents to make use of this center. So, I am thankful to Mr. Cook for all his work, his dedication, and share his hope that one day there will no longer be a need for this center. So, it is with great pleasure that I present this certificate to you with our most heartfelt thanks. Dr. Cook, thank you so much for all your hard work. With great pleasure, we give you this certificate on this day, and we also have, this is the personal one. This is for your own office. This will be for the center itself. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Share some thoughts with us, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Reyes. I have to say, I'm not a physician. You honor me by calling me a doctor, but I'm not a physician. It's a real privilege to be here today to represent the Elizabeth Center. I would like to introduce some key people in our organization. Mr. Warner Backstrom, who's president of our board, Darlene Kubah, who's a member of our executive committee, Darlene, Robert Harrison, who's a member of our executive committee, Susan Eve, who's my assistant, and my son Sean, who's a deputy attorney general for the state. Just a few minutes, a few words about the center. We estimate that the Elizabeth Center has screened about 700,000 residents of LA County in the 61 years of its existence. The importance of screening, early detection, is greater today than ever, and we are working hard to increase our volume and to increase our capability to handle larger numbers. It is sad that we are losing the war against cancer, and the best defense today is still early detection through screening. The center is not a treatment facility. We are unique in the United States. We only do screening. So, I urge all of you, get your annual screening, your own physician, your own clinic, your own hospital, or the Elizabeth Center. And again, we thank you for the honor and recognition of our organization.
Thank you, Mr. Cook, and I believe you have one more guest with us. And your name, sir?
I'm Jack Dilday, vice chairman.
Thank you.
I'm Dilday.
Dilday. Thank you so much for joining us, and welcome to city hall, and let's enjoy today. Thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you.
If you could come up to the back, we can take a picture.
Thank you. I think Mr. Rosendahl has a second presentation.
Normally, I don't make these presentations, you know? It's just, I enjoy my colleagues doing it, but I find myself today actually making two of them. The first one, if you caught this, was with the Kennedy family, and I was inspired by Robert F. Kennedy, who would have been 80 years old on Sunday. I wouldn't be actually on the city council if he hadn't inspired me and motivated me that we can do better and we can make the world a better place, and we all need to step up. Well, there are people in Delray, which is a part of my district that's near the ocean, who have stepped up, that have heard Senator Kennedy's clarion call that we can make the world a better place. And Julie Inoue, who and her husband, Dr. Michael Rubottom, from the Vista Del Mar Neighbors Association, have worked diligently to beautify the neighborhoods of Vista Del Mar and Playa Del Ray. If you go there recently, you will see shrubs planted, and you will see all kinds of beautification that have taken place by the community themselves, people engaging themselves in getting involved. And I'd like to have Julie come up and introduce the rest of the group, and we really want to thank them for what they're doing for community. Julie? Oh, there you are.
Good morning, Madam President, councilmembers. My name is Julie Inoue, and on behalf of the Vista Del Mar Neighbors Association in Playa Del Ray, I'd like to thank you for honoring all of us this morning. I'd like to introduce our friendly group here, Dr. Paul Muchnick, Mr. Rex and Linda May, Mrs. June Dykman, Mr. Ernie Horacek, Ms. Pam Matsuda, Mr. Chuck and Mrs. Julie Leeb, Dr. Michael Rubottom, Gabby and Danny Herschler, and Dennis Waque from the City of Los Angeles. The last time I was in front of you was with our 12-year-old daughter, Chandler, when we both spoke of the health care crises with potential closures and sales of hospitals in LA County. We all have to be grateful, since one of the hospitals we helped to stay open was hit by Hurricane Katrina in Slidell, Louisiana. Even with losing their entire belongings and homes, their community leaders, the nurses, doctors, and employees, continue to service their community and surrounding areas of New Orleans. This type of leadership and passion for humanity well describes the people here today being honored. With their busy lives, raising families and working, they continue to think of others by volunteering their expertise with any requests made of them. I'm honored to know them for the last 20 years, since founding our association with my husband, Dr. Michael Rubottom. This special group consists of physicians, a pilot, MBA, CEOs of homes, attorney, flight attendant, senior financial analysts, and our youngest students here, who will be the leaders of tomorrow. They are the inspiration that keeps this wonderful city alive and well. They are willing to roll up their sleeves and literally dig into the dirt in beautifying the environment for everyone to enjoy. They organize neighborhood watch block parties for everyone to relax and get to know each other. By giving pro bono legal advice, they have written the case for the attorney general of the state of California that demanded the preliminary injunction, which ultimately saved the Daniel Friedman Marina Hospital from closure, saving thousands of lives and saving hundreds of jobs, by servicing the homeless with medical attention during the earthquake, and in their belief of democracy, volunteering in our polling precincts. And as a city employee, we'd like a special thank you to go to Dennis Waque, a senior park maintenance supervisor, for over 15 years, who's always been there for us when we needed that extra help from the city and the street tree division. Even with his very busy schedule, now overseeing the beautification of Santa Monica Boulevard near Century City, I was able to catch him at home on a Saturday morning on his cell. We have made many a friend from the city, and we are very grateful for the last two decades for all of your help. Most importantly, as friends of mine, these honorees have let me think out loud and strategize with them, and give me the honest feedback when we undertook yet another project. They are like you, people who want to protect the quality of lives for everyone. So, thank you for honoring us here today, but let these fine citizens remind you all of the constituents in your communities that are willing to help work together with the city. To our great Councilmen Rosendahl and staff, we are always here for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. This is, where's Michael?
Michael.
There. Come on up to your wife. Just a dynamic duo here. And there's Julie, and everybody else, you're all about coming. And I just want to make a little more introduction to the two rising stars that are standing right here in front of me. That's Gabby and Danny, who actually, their efforts in their community have been incredible. These two young people held garage sales and bake sales to save the Daniel Friedman Hospital, and they've engaged themselves. So, in the beginning of your lives, as you are now, Gabriella, here is a certificate for your involvement in community, and here's one for you, Danny, same thing. Congratulations. Thank you all for letting us do this. Great, great, great.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President.
Colleagues, we now have a quorum. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardiness Garcetti-Gruel, Han Labange, Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Yaseen Padilla, 12 members present, and a quorum. Madam President.
Thank you. First item of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Perry moves. Ms. Han seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Parks moves. Mr. Zine seconds.
Madam President, before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a request to continue item 14 for 30 days to December 20th.
That will be continued to December 20th?
That's correct.
Thank you. Next order?
There's also been a request to continue item 15 to November 29th.
That item will be continued to November 29th.
On the regular agenda, item 1 is an item notice for public hearing. Council should close the hearing and continue the ordinance to December 13.
Do we need to vote on that, then?
No, Madam.
Okay. That will be continued to December 13th.
Items 2 through 19 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 2 through 4 are commission appointments. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, we'll hold those two, those three on the desk.
That would leave council with items 5 through 19, with the exceptions of 14 and 15 that were continued. On item 13, the Housing Committee has submitted its report, and on item 18, a motion is required inasmuch as the recommendations differ.
Thank you. Specials, please.
17 for Mr. Parks.
Item 7 and number 17, and 19. Any other items, colleagues? The call special? If not, Mr. Clerk?
Madam President, we do need a motion on 18.
Okay. Mr. Reyes moves. Mr. Cardiness seconds.
Which committee report?
On item number 18. Which two reports are before us? We have both.
You have an Arts Park as a recommendation, A, and B is a Budget and Finance Committee report that acts to receive and file the matter.
I think, we'll hold that on the desk for a moment, then, for some questions to be answered on that item. Thank you. So, the remainder of the items are now before us. Yes, we called item special, 7. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Those items have been approved. Next order of business.
I...
Who've been had a request for item 13, Mr. Cardiness, to go forth with? Okay.
Items 20 through 30 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Colleagues, those items are now before us. Any specials? Ms. Perry?
I'll wait till we vote on. I want to ask for six to go forth with.
Any other items? Okay. Madam Clerk, open the roll and the remainder of the items. Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Those items have been approved. Next order of business.
Six go forth with, please.
Six would go forth with.
On the continuation agenda, items 31 to 34 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Those items are now before us. Colleagues, any items to be called special?
Getting money either, the city.
If not... If not, Madam Clerk, those items are before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Those items have been approved. Next order?
Also on the continuation page, Items 35 through 37 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Those items now before us. Madam, yes, Ms. Han?
31, 32, 33, how many are there? 337. Oh, 31 through 37.
You want to call those special?
I would.
Some of those we just approved, I believed? We did. Which items have we approved and we can ask for reconsideration?
Right now, Items 30-
I thought we were just up to 30.
We already moved 31 through 34.
Oh, that was quick.
Before council right now is Items 35 through 37.
So, right now, we'll call Items 35 through 37 special, and then if we could, open the roll and reconsideration. Ms. Han on 31 through 34?
Yes.
Okay. So, open for reconsideration. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Okay. Those items have now been, are being reconsidered and be added to our special agenda. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, any other items?
Would take you back to the items called special, and do you wish to take up the commissioners?
Yes, we'll take the commissioners first.
Item 2 is the appointment of Mr. Herbert Seguenza to the El Pueblo de Los Angeles Historical Monument Authority.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Congratulations. We don't have anyone who wants to grill you. Would you like to say a few words before we take the vote?
I just want to say that I'm very proud to serve on the commission. As you know, I'm a member of Culture Clash, and I guess it's safe to say, oh, thank you. I guess it's safe to say that we're part of the cultural landscape of the city, and I can't wait to roll up my sleeves and participate in something more substantial.
I think both is a pretty hard work on being on Culture Clash as well as being on this commission. We welcome. We now have someone who'd like to say a few words. Councilmember Reyes.
First, I just want to rise and thank you for all your, the messages that you're able to deliver to many of our young people through all your production. I think particularly poignant was the Chavez Ravine production that you held maybe a couple of years ago.
Yes.
And I wanted to ask you, we have a new high school that's being developed here off of Grand. It's an art high school. And I wanted to get your impression of how, the juxtaposition you just can't help but see between Grand and El Pueblo and the role there. Some thoughts on how we might leverage that relationship, both physically, education-wise, and from an art point of view?
Well, the reason I joined the committee is because I feel like El Pueblo, I mean, Over Street, for one, is the center, the genesis of the city. It's where it started. It was Mexican at that point, and now our, most of, you know, the population of our school is primarily Latino, particularly in your district, and I just feel that culture, arts, history is very important to give our students, to give them a sense of pride, to give them a sense of place, and probably participate in society.
Well, there's a lot of theaters that have been emerging in the past few years. You have Balingo Foundation of the Arts.
Yes.
You have several smaller theaters that are cropping up around McCarthy Park. In Lincoln Heights, we have one that we're looking at on Altera and Griffin, and a lot of great talent out there. So, I'm looking forward with your leadership. I mean, you've been through the School of Hard Knocks and watched you guys grow up ever since you've been up in the Bay Area and the great evolution that has transpired. So, hopefully, some of those experiences can be shared with the future generations.
Yeah, I just want to let you know that we're applying for our 501(c) Culture Clash as a nonprofit. We're going to have a nonprofit branch, and we're developing the Portal Project, which is primarily to develop writers and screenwriters, you know, future, future screenwriters and Latino writers.
Fantastic. Well, thank you for everything you've done for our city and indeed, our country with the messages that you've delivered. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I too rise in support and want to thank you for the amazing performances I've seen you at, not only Chavez Ravine, but in many other places, Miami, not in Miami, but here, representing a picture of Miami, seeing you perform in Venice, other places, and just you capture a slice of life that I think El Pueblo could use revitalization around. And El Pueblo is an amazing place, has an amazing collection of human beings, and despite sometimes the lack of programming, people still come. And so, I hope you look at some of the other models. I mean, if you look at downtown, grand performances on Grand Avenue-
Yes.
-has obviously a good chunk of chains to do it, but they have these huge performances, bringing people where there aren't really people that are living. Down at El Pueblo, there are people there all the time, hanging out, and if we can give them that sort of stuff, inspired by Culture Clash, inspired by the friends you have, inspired by some of your colleagues in the performing arts, it should and can be and was really the center of the city, and we can make it that again. So, I know that you share that same vision, but I look forward to seeing that, and congratulations on your great work-
Yes, thank you.
-and becoming a commissioner. My God, I hope you do a skit on this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're pleased to have you a member of the city family here. If we could, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Congratulations.
I'm impressed.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, next order, please.
Item 3 is the appointment of Ms. Holly Mitchell to the Commission for Children, Youth, and Their Families.
Good morning. How are you this morning?
Good morning. Fine, thank you.
I'd like to also give you an opportunity, if you'd like, to say a few words about the commission appointment.
Just briefly, I really look forward, as a native Angelino, to serve the commission. I have the privilege of serving as the CEO of one of the largest child development agencies in the state, Crystal Sayers. And in our 25th year, serving children and families in South Los Angeles, we've had a privilege over the duration of the commission's existence to work in partnership with the commission with regard to the delivery and development of childcare services in Los Angeles. Myself, I've served and had staff recently, worked in partnership with commission staff in the development of the city's childcare policy for the city. And so, it truly is an honor. I think being a mother of a five-year-old and a daughter certainly gives adds to my experience, and I look forward to bringing those experiences in my service to the commission. It'll be a privilege.
Thank you very much. I know we've worked, and you have hosted some of our childcare policy meetings at your offices. I saw Dr. Karen Hill Scott yesterday, who-
Great, yes.
-one of the founders of this wonderful organization. So, your expertise is going to be a wonderful addition to the commission, and we look forward to that. So, we're going to ask that we open the roll on this item, colleagues. Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Item's been approved. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Madam President.
You're welcome. Next order of business.
Item 4 is the appointment of Ms. Rochelle Mills to the South Los Angeles Area Planning Commission.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to give you an opportunity as well to just speak a little bit about, you're going to be on a very important planning commission here for our city.
Well, it is an honor. I'm a lifelong resident of Los Angeles, a shameless LA booster, and very proud to be considered for this commission appointment. Are there any questions?
I have Mr. Reyes, who'd like to ask a few questions.
Thank you, Madam President. It's not really a question, it's really more a compliment. When you became, when you came before us in committee, I appreciated her insight as to the role of the nonprofits, the role of how we look at communities who have not been considered for investments. And the question I posed at the time is, what could we do to look at this notion that investors tend to have is, why should I be the first pioneer to go into areas where no one else is investing in? And part of response was to make sure we could amplify and talk about the wealth that's there, and look at how we can interpret the notion of value in areas that essentially have high levels of density with a lot of little wallets floating in it, and actually tap into that wealth in a way that makes sense when we talk about returns of investment for developers. So, I just want to thank you for your hard work. It's obvious, your experience in the nonprofit sector, understanding its role in the for-profit economy is very crucial. I will pose a question, given that you've already answered it before, but can you give us an overview of some of the work you've been involved with that deals with the ability to create these transformations in land use?
My background is in architecture. My husband and I have a design practice, Mill Studio, and we also have a company that does art and architecture tours, and we have an opportunity to tell people about the benefits of the communities that they're in. One of the benefits of working in architecture and in arts and being a resident of this community is being able to show people the, what's already there. So much, so often, we spend so much time looking over the walls into other communities, and we don't realize the value of what we have. What I have been able to do is work on several community projects, including Lemur Parks, street improvements and storefront improvements, do some pro bono work for arts organizations like St. Emo Village, who have a vested interest in the community and who beautify the community simply through their art and their existence. And just making our residents and the public aware of that gives them a sense of buy-in. When we're talking about developing and planning, if there's no buy-in, if there's no ability for the neighbors to resonate with it or find a sense of pride in it, then it falls on deaf ears, and that's what I'd love to bring to this.
Again, thank you so much for all your hard work and look forward to working with you as we go through the process of our land use decisions. So, thank you so much.
Oh, thank you for considering me.
Yes, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to ask Ms. Mills, just give us a recount of your community activism and your participation as a volunteer in many of the activities of the 8th District as it relates to CACs and PACs, and so people are aware of just what your expertise is.
Well, sure. Recently, I was appointed to the Crenshaw Design Review Board, and that board is charged with working in District 8 from about 39th Street all the way to Florence and all of the development that's going there. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to drive through the Crenshaw District, but certainly you should make it an appointment to do so and see the development that's going on. And being able to work with the Crenshaw Specific Plan, which is the first one, first time it's ever been developed, and to have an opportunity to work with the community discussing the projects that are being built in that area, gives them a sense of empowerment and me a sense of pride to be able to contribute in that way. To be able to give back, to live in a community, but to also contribute is just an amazing honor, and certainly an honor to be appointed to this commission as well.
Thank you. Colleagues, I strongly support Ms. Mills, not only an 8th District resident, but a person that's actually taken the time from her busy schedule of making a living to actually work on the kinds of projects that she'll be sitting on in the commission to making those decisions, understanding both the private sector and the nonprofit sector, but also having a great deal of involvement with the whole issue of design, which we hear a great deal of comments about as it relates to what type of projects come into our community. And so, I am just pleased to say to her, welcome aboard. We look forward to working with you. There's a lot of work to be done, whether we're talking about 83rd and Vermont or Broadway in Manchester, some of those projects that have been on the board for 20 years that we're trying to move forward, and we just look forward to your capable leadership on that commission.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Rosendahl for a few remarks.
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate this opportunity. Good morning.
Good morning.
One of the big issues is preserving affordable housing. In the 11th District, 58% of my constituents are renters. As I'm standing here before you, Ellis Act's are evicting tenants from Lincoln Place. Lincoln Place is a complex that now is going to be changed. We did everything we could to protect the tenants. Tenants don't have as much rights as homeowners do in terms of their own ability to preserve their opportunities, and in my district, we will lose our middle class if affordable housing continues to go down to the bulldozers over people. When you get on the commission, do you have any thoughts of how we can preserve affordable housing in the city?
Well, it's an interesting problem, because I find that even with the people that I know, what they seem to resonate with is new and shiny, and trying to convince residents to support existing housing, historical housing, new housing models, that might not be as beautiful as some of these new projects. And when I say beautiful, I'm talking about simply the newness, the architecture of newness, which people buy into, and they're so willing to level an existing structure for the sake of something that in five years, the honeymoon is over. I think it really has to do with when we speak with our communities, to let them know the value of what's there. Again, I can't say enough, if they can buy into it, then they will support it. If they don't have the information behind it, then we're fighting a losing battle, and we lose things like Lincoln Place, which is a historical and which has contributions by Black architects, and people don't know that and don't understand why it's important to them. I think that's something that we cannot overlook when we're discussing housing projects and new developments, is an opportunity to take a moment and educate them about the stock of what's there and how they can become stakeholders and take pride in their communities. Once they do that, I think that you have more support against those kinds of developments.
The second problem is location, 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 and a developer can see profits being made. Is there ways to give tenants more rights and relocation monies and other issues that might lessen the desire to Ellis Act out people?
Well, you know, that's something that we'll have to look into. I mean, the truth of the matter is economics rules, and if we cannot convince developers that there is beneficial economies in creating something sustaining and in bringing, you know, bringing along that middle class and the affordable housing, then we've got a problem, just as I was saying, on those who live there and opt out, as well as those who are coming in. If we can somehow convince or show these people that there is a way to develop without losing our soul in the process, then that's what we need to do.
I thank you for your comments and congratulations. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Rosendahl. Thank you, Commissioner. The item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
That item's been approved. Congratulations. Mr. Clerk, on Item Number 18, we will adopt the Budget and Finance Report, which is a receive and file. So, if we could take that item before us now, on Item Number 18, we could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
That item has been approved. Next order of business.
Item 7 was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine, I understand you had some questions. Have they been answered, or we?
Councilmember Tony Cardinus answered all of my questions.
He did.
So, we can move that forward.
We do have public comment cards on Item Number 7. I think the public hearing has already been heard. Is there anyone that would like to open public hearing, or no? Okay.
So, I'm satisfied with the questions I had.
The report. So, the two reports, both the Public Safety and Transportation Committee- Parks and Rec, my apologies, Item Number 7. So, we, since there's been a public hearing on Item Number 7, we will have that item now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Sorry, it did not appear until just now. Mr. Weiss.
I was just looking, I was just looking for Mr. Fujioka. I wanted to ask my question, but I don't see him.
He is still here. He is right here.
Could we, could we hold the matter over for a minute so I can just talk to Mr. Fujioka? Hold on the desk. Thank you.
We'll hold it on the desk for the moment. Okay. Well, now we have Mr. Cardinus, Smith or Smith. Do you want to ask questions, or no? Okay. We'll hold Item 7 on the desk for the moment. Next order of business.
Item 17 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a mini-motion circulating at this time. Basically, the City of LA received of windfall of about $16 million of Prop 42 money, in which the mayor and the CAO's report basically identified a three-way split with storm repair, street paving, and 5, .5 million going to the UB. The mini-motion requests $1 million from the UB to address, number one, the approximately 100 speed bumps that have been basically engineered and approved, but there's no funding for on a citywide basis. The other part of it, which is about $800,000, will add to our ability to pave about another four to five miles of dirt alleys in the city. Right now, we have about 57 miles of dirt alleys. Right now, we have about 57 miles of dirt alleys. With the current budget and this allocation, we will eliminate about 25 miles of those dirt alleys. And so, that's what the amended motion, we worked this out after two weeks with the mayor's office to impact the, the UB account so that we could move that money into more street services. It also is clearly supportive of our approach in this year's budget to put more money into our infrastructure. Uh, Mr. Robinson has advised us that he can do this additional work without any other personnel. And so, this is a matter of providing funding for materials to move forward on these issues, particularly on the street bumps. All of us are aware that we hear about speed bumps being approved, but no funding. This will wipe out all of those this year. And so, not, uh, next year, we'll address those that are in, in the queue later.
Thank you. And I, I believe the, um, motion is being distributed at this time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so, if I could, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Smith, followed by Mr. Cardenas.
I'd like to stand in support of this, uh, effort, but I do have a couple of questions. One is that we all know that the chief, Brian, has been working on the broken windows theory, that we have dirt alleys, we have unlit alleys, crime tends to fester. So, there's one approach in how you start prioritizing which alleys get done. So, my question really is, and if there's anyone here that is able to speak to the issue, is we're doing it by when they came in to be, to be paved or how the, how would the distribution be determined in the paved alleys?
Basically, we relied on Mr. Robinson in the first 20 miles, and we asked him if he added another 2, five miles, that he would basically address them in the priorities that they've set. About 80% of the unpaved alleys are in about four council districts. And so, uh, it's a matter of adding, again, we'll have 32 miles left, but it's really trying to cut it in half this fiscal year.
And I think it's, uh, an important effort in that if we are going to start bringing down the levels of crime, many times in places where people feel it's a space that's forgotten or not taken care of, if we start paving these alleyways, I think we can take a step further in helping out our men and women in blue and our communities that have been suffering from a lot of this violence. So, um, I'd like to encourage a night vote.
Thank you. Go to Mr. Cardenas next.
Thank you. I wanted to ask a question of Councilmember Parks, just to clarify. By and large, uh, the motion here would benefit, uh, the ability to elevate the amount of improvements across the city. Is that correct?
That's correct. Uh, the 90 to 100 speed bumps are citywide, and they come through as approved on the order in which they've been received. We wanted to just knock out those that we had advised the public that they were approved, but no funding. And that's that 90 to 100. The issue of the alleys, uh, it's 57 miles. We started this fiscal year. The budget touched 20 miles. We're adding another five miles. And the department will be working with the council office as to what their priorities. And we hope to continue this coming fiscal year to continue knocking that down to where we'll have no unpaved or dirt alleys in this, in the city over the next couple of years.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. I'll acknowledge Mr. Smith, followed by Mr. Labange.
Yes, uh, Mr. Robertson, if you would, please. While I have no problem supporting Mr. Parks' effort to put a big lion's share of this money into those four districts in the downtown area, because I know the alleys are a big problem, but we do have a lot of problems in alleys around the city that we're not paving currently. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Not just unpaved, but existing alleys that don't get repaved, they don't get any consideration whatsoever, other than occasional pothole here and there. Is that correct?
That's correct. Uh, good morning. Bill Robertson, Bureau of Street Services. The, the problem with alleys, they do not qualify for the gas tax funding. So, over the last several years, our general fund allocation, which is the funding that primarily can be used to do those alleys, has been very limited. So, in years that we have had more general fund money, and it gives the council members the ability to leverage those funds in the resurfacing program to identify high priority alleys. But you're absolutely correct, they are a low priority when it comes in terms to the funding allocations.
So, it'd be fair to say that every one of us around here are having problems with alleys. Maybe Mr. Parks is a little worse because they're totally unpaved, but all of us have alley problems because we've just not addressed that for a long time.
Yeah, we have approximately 800 miles of alleys in the City of Los Angeles. 400 of those miles are unimproved, which means that they have no engineered drainage. Uh, some of them may be a combination of the entrances for 25 feet of asphalt, and then the rest of it is gravel or dirt. So, we have a lot of problems with alleys.
Okay. And, um, secondly, um, we also have unimproved, uh, streets in the City of LA. I know Ms. Grill has some, I've got some, I've got a number. So, there's a number of streets that still aren't even paved, not just to mention alleys, but streets as well. Is that...
Yeah. Again, we, we have a number of streets back in the, uh, in the valley that were constructed during the 50s and early 60s, where they were allowed to be constructed without full improvements. In other words, no curb and gutter. Many of those streets have the old Hollywood, what we call Hollywood berms, the roll-up berms.
Right. So, my, my recommendation, Mr. Parks, to you would be that while we're reserving $4.5 million still in the UB, the issue you've addressed with your motion deals with only a few districts, but all of us have similar problems. And we should take a look at the UB, that's the UB funds that we're reserving right now to look at some of those other issues. I know Mr. Reyes has numerous street problems in his district, being one of the older districts of the city and, and alleys, et cetera. So, I think we ought to take a look holistically, not just focusing all in your district or the four downtown, but holistically for the whole city. We're all suffering that same kind of problem with alleys. And in the valley, we have a number of those districts have unimproved streets as well. And I think we should look, and I would hope Mr. Robinson may come back with a, a solution to that or a recommendation, where we can take a look at some of those other issues around the city as it relates to this Prop 42 money then.
Let me just comment, uh, Mr. Smith, I think the first 11 million of the Prop 42 money is going into street paving and for damage repair, which are also citywide. And so, uh, the issue of dirt alleys, we thought we'd, those who have dirt alleys, we'd bring them up to be paved, and then we would continue to look at alleys that were paved and need to be repaired. But when we look at all the, and I think even though about four districts have about 80% of the dirt alleys, we have dirt alleys throughout the city. And so, it's not, uh, saying that, uh, every part of the city's not going to get attention, but the issue that we were hopeful is that the 20 miles that have been programmed for this year, we would add on to that process to eliminate the overall 37 miles of unpaved, and then continue our process to repair those that have been paved but need, are in need of repair, just like the 11 million of the mayor's proposal is going into storm repair and street repair.
And I still have a little time left, so I'll use it. Uh, and, and just in response to that, uh, I would, I would suggest to you that alleys are important, but unpaved streets are higher in the hierarchy of responsibility for the city than our unpaved alleys. And we still have a lot of unpaved streets around this city that should be given higher consideration, and certainly repairs of existing streets, because as we all know, we're not giving enough money to this department to even keep up with the degeneration of our streets on an annual basis. So, there's a growing, a growing deficit here in the amount of streets we are doing. So, we're only, when we add $5 million to it, we're helping, but we're not even at the level of 100% maintenance right now. And, and we need to consider that, particularly in, in some of the older part of the cities, which our streets are in deplorable condition.
No, I, I don't disagree. And I think what we tried to do, and Mr. Robinson was kind enough to give us some numbers where he didn't need new personnel. And so, this is why we came up with approach to try to put more money where he can do it within existing resources. We asked him about other additions, and they seemed to needed more people, which then basically causes the price to go up. And so, that's what we tried to do, is fit it in his resources and where we're buying, not equipment, but resources and supplies that he could work within his own existing personnel. And that's why we came up with that level. He can do 100, if we go into 200, he needs more people. But he can do 100, uh, speed bumps with the existing personnel. He can do the, uh, the current extra five miles of dirt alleys without additional personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, followed by Mr. Zine and Ms. Perry.
Yeah, I thank you. Uh, I think this should go to committee if it can. Is there any possibility? Because I think alleys should truly be discussed. Uh, Mr. Parks, is there any problem with going to committee on this?
It just came out of committee.
Well, on the issue of alleys, though, because see, what about all the alleys that were closed in, uh, in the 1980s in, throughout, uh, parts of the city? Are they going to be reopened and paved?
Well, this isn't dealing with closed alleys. In fact, when people made the contract to close alleys, they took on the responsibility when they were gated up. We're talking about alleys that people historically have used as part of the street traffic that have not been...
Well, then, that's a very good point, because I would rather have more thought put to this and have Planning Department here and Transportation, because it takes, for instance, uh, the alley east of Western Avenue on the Wilshire corridor, from Wilshire all the way up towards Santa Monica Boulevard. It has more potholes than Mars. Okay? It's an unimproved alley. Now, Ed, if Planning Department and Transportation looked at it and said, hey, we could possibly improve these adjacent alleys, and also, that's why I asked the CAO to come there, I know gas tax is not available, but I would argue members for alleys that are adjacent to major or secondary highways should get some sense of gas tax because it does prevent the circulation. Trucks, FedEx, uh, trash trucks, all that goes on, and unless you could use the alley, it doesn't make any sense. But I think alleys should really be looked at. And then, from a commercial sense, the City of Pasadena has done a tremendous job in their alleys in creating, uh, a space to be. So, I just don't want to, I, I think it's a great opportunity, we focus on alleys, but maybe you could committee, who is in charge of alleys in the City of Los Angeles? Do you have one person who's an alley cat?
We have several. Uh, actually, it's, uh, uh, we have a, for the first time, uh, in the city's history, we actually have an active inventory of the...
Great.
800 miles of alleys in the city. The question becomes, um, in order to be eligible for gas tax, the State of California puts certain requirements. Uh, first of all, they, they mandate that a, a alley be wider than 20 feet. We have very few, if any, alleys remaining that are unimproved, that are...
With that in mind, and I saw a VAC walk by, a VAC, I want a motion for state legislation that we could change the requirement on alleys adjacent to major and secondary highways. Would you agree that an alley off of Western Avenue is good for, uh, to have it improved?
The, the streets and highway codes gives the legislative branch of cities to make that call, but there are certain requirements. You can indeed take an alley that's less than 20 feet wide and declare it a street. It requires a four-fifth vote of the legislative body, and also, then you have to meet certain requirements stipulated. Number one, the alley must serve the general good of the public.
Right.
It cannot be just to serve adjacent property owners.
Right.
So, there's various requirements that's possibly something that we could look at on those improved alleys that are adjacent to major thoroughfares, where we have commercial businesses or retail businesses that utilize those alleys.
Right. And, and this improvement proposed, will this include concrete gutters down the center?
No. This, this program, which was established a number of years ago, and originally included, and still does, dirt streets and alleys. The program was designed to give those individuals that were going to benefit from the, the paving of the street, a new roadbed. It did not include any major engineering improvements. What we're finding, and I mentioned last year at the hearing was, uh, the budget hearings, was that although we're allocated to do 20 miles this year, the number of alleys that are eligible for this program is dwindling, because our goal is to go in, pave a new roadbed, and not disturb or address any major drainage issues. If we have drainage issues, it drives the cost up to resurface that alley.
Yeah.
And, and so, you get less alleys done for the money that was allocated.
I mean, I'm just, I, I just, Mr. Parks, I don't know, I, I would support, because I know there's certain parts of the city that were developed with alleys. Uh, and I don't know, I would rather spend more money, maybe, uh, try to make the alleys right. I just want more thought put into it, uh, in the sense that how we are doing this, uh, because alleys are important. So, I don't know why if the committee couldn't, Mr. Smith is the chair, if they take it to committee, just like you do in finance, go through it and come back.
Let me just say this, uh, I think we did, did give a little thought to it. Uh, the other issue is, is that, uh, in addressing it, what we tried not to do is manage Mr. Robinson's department. We said we're going to put funds there. He's going to have to swap some of these funds that are eligible. He is going to be making, along with the council district, what alleys, so if you're concerned about major thoroughfares, and there's dirt alleys, those are the ones that can be done. We've not set a schedule of what alleys to be fixed. We're just trying to go forward, give him the resources that he needs to continue the process of 20 miles to add to 25. So, at some point in time, we would not have any dirt alleys in the city. And although everyone may have preferences as to streets or whatever, the people that live next to a dirt alley, their preference is not to have one, and that's what we're trying to solve. And, and every district has dirt alleys, so it doesn't eliminate any district from not getting the resources that we...
And Mr., and Mr., wait a minute. Mr. Parks, we'll have you press your button again, um, and answer, but, Mr. Labange, did you want to conclude? Because I know you gave Mr. Parks some of your time for a moment.
I'll, I'll press my button again, because I have a few more.
You have a few more? Okay.
Could I interject something?
Yes, Mr....
As part of this, I know we're focusing on the alleys right now, but, um, please recognize that as part of this report includes storm damage and street resurfacing. Um, the storm damage must be done soon. We're starting to run out of time. You know, the, if anything, we, we must send the storm damage, the storm damage is five and a half. The, um, for, we need Bill to get out there. As you know, it's soon to be December, and if the, once the storms hit, it's too late for him to, 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 um, to do the work.
Thank you. Uh, we'll have Mr. Zine, followed by Ms. Perry, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Labange.
Thank you. We have a fire station on Reseda Boulevard that the access is through the alley. And every time I visit the fire station, they bring up to my attention that we've got some huge potholes there. Can any of these funds be approved for that? Because we're hearing that they can't do it under existing resources, and it's a public safety issue, as these fire trucks have to have ingress and egress to the station on Reseda Boulevard. They, they'll patch it, but that doesn't really cut it with the heavy weight of the fire trucks. How about that?
Uh, again, that would qualify as part of this, this program. Um, again, the, the key is that we're going to be using general fund money to do those alleys. So, we can address those, and as we work with your council office, we can identify that as a priority for you. And to be honest, probably the, the answer there is not so much, uh, an asphalt approach for them. They, Fire Department may need a concrete approach due to the way to the...
Fire Station 73 on Reseda Boulevard, I'm sure they'll be happy to, uh, take care of your crews when they show up, to take care of their dilemma. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Um, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I, uh, normally am very respectful and work well within the process of what it takes to be able to secure money, uh, to handle some of the constituent issues. Um, but on this particular issue, I, I have to stand up on this with Mr. Parks, um, because I think we've both been very, very diligent and patient and working through a process to try to find some response to the daily flood of complaints within most of the districts in South Los Angeles, including Janice's district. And she had another appointment, but I, I want to include, uh, CD-15 in this. And, and the alleys to which we are referring, and I think we're about to get a map in just a minute, they're not in downtown, they're in South Los Angeles. Have to deal with problems of standing water, enormous amounts of standing water in unpaved, unimproved alleys behind people's property that, you know, create an enormous amount of not only stench, but fetid, fetid water with mosquitoes and constant complaints. So, we have to constantly ask the county to come out and spray for pests and vermin. Many of these alleys are used in neighborhoods that are very densely populated in South Los Angeles, not downtown, for overflow parking. In some cases, where people have property where they don't even have a driveway, the alley is the only way to go in and out of their property. Uh, the fact that that did not, this does not involve new, no, uh, any new personnel, and to finally address some parts of the city, I don't know if some of you have this, but in, in my district on the eastern part, near Alameda, there are still some blocks that there are not even sidewalks. Some of the sidewalks are so old, they were built at the beginning of the city, they're still there in pieces, but made out of sand and water. Uh, I believe I've always been very patient in waiting, uh, to get my work done, the work schedule, and be on the list and come up in the order in which we were called. But in this case, we have an opportunity. We have been extremely thoughtful about this, tried to look at it from all angles. And, uh, as Mr. Parks has made the case, that it is inclusive in its approach. We're not denying other parts of the city anything, and in fact, they will be included. We're not denying other parts of the city anything, and in fact, they will be included, but this is just such a unique and highly controversial problem in, in South Los Angeles that I don't think it's unreasonable for us to ask for this.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Smith, followed by Mr. LaBonde and Mr. Reyes.
Thank you. I think Mr. LaBonde brought us some good points that we need to talk about. And what I would suggest is that we've already allocated a good portion of the money under the Prop 42 guidelines. This is a partial allocation that can help some parts of the city, but not all. And I would suggest then, members of the council, and I would move, if we could, a motion on the floor to send to a joint committee meeting of Public Works and Finance to look at the remaining $4.5 million in the context of Prop 42 as it relates to other needs for the infrastructure of the city that meets the Prop 42 guideline. So, my motion would be, if I have a second, to send to those joint committees the issue of the remaining money that's currently designated to the U B to discuss where they properly go.
Is there a second?
I have a second, and I want to ask a question afterwards.
Oh, thank you very much.
Sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, Mr. Smith, first of all, when the CIO said, and Mr. Robinson said, there's emergency work that needs to be done now, we all support that moving ahead. When the other issue that you had, to move ahead on, there's two out of three issues on this report you-
The second issue is that we need to move also, not only on the storm damage, which is critical-
Right.
-but also on the, the street resurfacing portion.
Right.
We're already seeing the first quarter go by, and-
I know, and you're behind.
Yep.
Of course, I want to ask Mr. Fujioka, you know, when they talked about staffing problems, and I know your staff is coming to your table to rescue you, probably.
Probably.
Staffing problems, how often do we hire by the hall, from the hall? And do we hire enough from the hall? Because sometimes I know our Personnel Department is getting inundated from all departments of trying to do that. Do you get enough of opportunity to hire from the hall to do this work?
We're limited right now to primarily a couple of positions, or actually, three positions. We have the ability right now to hire carpenters, cement finishers, and cement finisher workers. We're trying to look into the opportunities that are out there to even go to the hiring hall temporarily to get the support of general labor. That's where-
What does it take to get that?
I would have to check and see which unions are available, which unions that we'd be able to-
Well, the CIO could look at that. Members, I just want to see, right now, we've got money to do work, and if you're having trouble because all the city departments are asking for people to be hired, and Personnel Department has a big job, and I know they're working around the clock trying to meet those goals, but I think if we could hire from the hall on laborers just to get the work done, that's what needs to be done. So, Mr. CIO, could you look in that and make sure that we could? And also, Ms. Perry made some very good points there, and I'm sorry she stepped away for the moment there. But, Mr. Parks, are you okay with this, a joint committee on this issue here?
I'd be glad to do that. I would just like to move this forward so that we can get it done by this fiscal year.
Right. There's also, with Prop 42 money, it has a shelf life.
Right.
If we don't use it in a timely manner, we could lose it.
I got that. But, Mr. Smith, I just want to hear, Mr. Smith, Mr. Parks has agreed for a joint committee meeting, but also, this matter today goes forward, okay, which is real good. And also, at that joint committee, I see Mr. Reyes, who is so much passionate about city planning issues. I want a planning officer at the chair, I want a transportation person at the chair. I want them to tell me, yeah, I thought about Western Avenue and the alleys on side of it, I thought about Vermont Avenue, or Ventura Boulevard, or whatever other streets are, what could we do? Because maybe we could use gas tax. And I did see a VAC, and he's going to do a motion for state legislation to see if, on streets that are major or secondary, that we could use gas tax for alleys and make them improved. So, anyway, thank you so much, then we'll move forward with that.
Thank you, Mr. LaBonde. Mr. Reyes, and then for Mr. Parks to close.
I'll let it go.
Thank you. And I know, Mr. Parks, you want to make closing comments.
I would just like to, we're going to pass around a chart just so that there's no misinformation about the extent of alleys. It shows from street services of the 57 miles of unpaved alleys, the distribution by districts, the lowest of which is the 12th District with .16 miles, the highest in the 15th District with 11 miles. So, every district will have some ability to get dirt alleys repaired as it relates to citywide. So, no, it's not relegated to only one district, it's not relegated to, I mean, we could, we could knock out that one alley in the 12th District, and you'd have 100%. And so, but also, want to bring your attention to the other 11 million. It's dealing on street miles primarily, we're repairing storm damage and street miles, so every district will get some of that, every district will get some of the dirt alleys, and every district will get some of their approved speed humps done between now and June 30th. And Mr. Robinson has said he'd do that for us within existing resources. Thank you.
Thank you, and I-
Ms. Gru, just to drive the point home, the ability to hire from the hall will be looked at to try to increase, because June 30th comes around, and weather problems, I want to make sure you have the team together within the existing budget, so that you're going to look at that, Mr. CIO is going to look at that, and find out what we have to do, and let us know if there's any problem with hiring from the hall good skilled, dedicated labor to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaBonde. This was a good conversation. Bill, you're usually always a popular general manager because of our streets and trees and the other things that happen, so we'll look forward to the joint meeting that's been recommended. Okay, colleagues, item is now before us with the amending motion by Mr. Parks. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. That item has been approved. I know we had item number seven before us, I think those questions have been answered. Colleagues, anyone else have questions on item number seven before we continue? Yes, Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Smith.
I want to know if we can continue.
They, they popped up here, I'm not quite sure. So, must have been an error. There are no questions on this item. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
That item has been approved. Next order of business, please.
Item 19 was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. DOT, LAPD. I was asked by a reporter on this matter if I was carrying the water for a lobbyist, and I want to make it perfectly clear that I am friends with many lobbyists, including the two lobbyists that represent the two top companies on this matter. And it's because of my 37 years with the Los Angeles Police Department, 18 of those years on a motorcycle responding to fatal crashes and making death notifications, and I'm so passionate about making sure we make the right choice on a photo red light program. My concern is that the police commission received a letter from me and Councilmember Smith approximately a year ago, asking that this matter be tested on a pilot project. The police commission never responded to our request, no pilot was ever done, and I don't care which company gets this, as long as it's the company that's going to best serve the people of Los Angeles. But I wanted to make it very clear for the record that I support photo radar, that I think it's an effective tool in getting people to stop at red lights, which we know that we've got a problem with people continuing to run red lights, not only through our normal intersections, but now with the orange line in place in my district in the San Fernando Valley. And that I want to make sure that we've done everything to give the people of Los Angeles the best program possible. So, I'm not carrying anyone's water. What I'm remembering is all those fatal crashes that I visited, and all those death notifications that I've made during my 37 years with the police department, and hopefully we don't have to continue making those, and people will drive safer, and these red lights will have an impact on people, forcing them to stop. And if not, then the consequences will be the subsequent follow-up and the citation. I want to make sure that's clear on the record. Captain McCarthy, I've attended a couple of committee meetings with you, we've had conversation. Sergeant Foster, I know your commitment to public safety and as a motor supervisor, which I held that position for many, many years. What I want to make sure, we've gone through this in public safety, we've gone through this in transportation, the three-point spread was an issue that was brought up. I don't want to belabor the point, I don't want to continue discussing, I want to see something put into place. I want to see it put in as quickly as possible. I understand that both of the top two competitors, they're three points apart, have comparable equipment, whether it's the loop, or the radar, or whatever the case may be, they can do a comparable delivery of service. I know that our treasurer has concerns about the finances of one company, I know that Cerritos, which people inspected, their rate is not 80%, which calls for an RFP. I just want it perfectly clear that we needed to move forward, put a place, all those intersections in place, so we can hopefully discourage people from running red lights. And with that in mind, if you can just give us a synopsis, and I know we've discussed this probably at nauseam, to, to come with a final conclusion on why we're selecting one over another, and the 80% that we're looking for as a filing rate, and if Sergeant Foster, the technology that we're looking at from the one that has, has won, and as well as the one that did not win. Thank you.
Kevin McCarthy, Special Operations Bureau. I and the Los Angeles Police Department are confident we selected the, the most qualified contractor. The contractor, Nestor, has superior technology than the competitor. They have a forward-facing camera that captures 30 frames per second. None of the other competitors do that. The other competitors have one, you have one shot to take a photo of the driver. If you miss that one opportunity, you miss the whole opportunity for a citation. The vendor we selected takes 30 frames per second. It gives you significantly a number, a number of citations or photos to pick from. So, no mistake about it, the technology in the company we picked is better. You know, the, as far as the, the 80%, the city attorney has incorporated a performance guarantee that's unequivocal to any contracts we've seen. The city attorney can answer questions relative to the product guarantee. You know, the bottom line is that the photo red light program works. We've done a study from when we started in 2000, 2000, the end of 2000, and the intersections that we had the photo red light, traffic collisions decreased about 14% in the specific traffic intersections. They increased about 20% in the streets approaching and surrounding, so we definitely know it works. We're ready to get up and going. I know you brought up a possibility of a pilot program. We, we entertain that. We don't believe it's in the best interest of the city to do a pilot program. We believe we selected the best company based on technology and price. The pilot program was never incorporated into an RFP, which would mean we'd have to go back out to an RFP. It would put this process about a year behind. We, we have the best company, we have the best product, and we're ready to proceed.
Thank you. Sergeant?
Unless you have a question of me, sir.
Just the issue of, you were the one that went to different venues, different sites, did the inspections.
Oh, what happened is, I was empowered by this committee to assemble a group, to make an analysis of the competent vendors that responded to our P request. We took field trips out to outside police jurisdictions to physically look to see what we would get in a working police setting. Unfortunately, I can't believe what is told to me by individuals from these various companies. I have to find out the information on myself. We took these trips, we seen exactly what we would get in a police setting, that's what brought us to the recommendation of Nestor Traffic Systems. They have not only a rear camera, which is video, which the number two company also has, but they also have a forward-facing video, which will freeze frame 30 frames per second to where I can use the two frames that are in a lace to positively plot that vehicle behind the limit line, which satisfies the requirements of the Vehicle Code of issuing the citation for red light. It'll give me a better opportunity to gain a clearer driver's photograph, not compromising the integrity of my officers or the entire system of going to court and trying to explain why we drug this person to court with a blurry photo. This will give us multiple opportunities to identify that driver, beyond a reasonable doubt testify in a competent fashion, and at the same time, work in a fashion which is fair to the motoring community.
Okay. Glenn, the, the issue of DOT and their involvement, participation in this process?
We, we've been an active partner with the police department throughout the, the beginning of the program and through this process. We work very closely, we, we are very confident that the contractor we have selected will be very good, and we're, we're really ready to get started.
And if we were to say no and go to a pilot, how long would that take? Would we have to go back to an RFP process and go do this whole situation again?
Yes.
So, we wouldn't be able to do it with these two companies? We'd have to go back to the drawing board and start all over?
The way, the way the RFP was written, it never left open the possibility of a pilot program, so we would have not really advised people that was a possibility, and it would be unfair.
So, what we're talking about is if the commission, the police commission would have responded a year ago to our letter, maybe we wouldn't be here today discussing this issue. We would have already done something, had something done, and we wouldn't be in this boat deliberating what we're trying to do.
Councilman, the police commission did, we did discuss the pilot program at police commission. The Los Angeles Police Department, at that time, took the position that they didn't want to do a pilot program, and I apologize that you didn't get a response.
Yeah, I didn't get a response, Councilmember Smith didn't get a response, and we'd appreciate in the future, when we send a letter asking for something, they would at least have the courtesy of responding back to us that we're not going to do this, so it wouldn't leave us sitting out there in the woods wondering why we didn't get an answer to a question, which maybe would have prevented all this.
My understanding.
So, in light of the fact that we have few options if we want to put something online, and I understand we're talking a couple months to go online with our new system?
Yes.
At least you've got the initial program in place?
Yes.
And we're going to talk about 32 throughout the city of Los Angeles?
Yes.
I know Councilmember Parks has a concern about distribution throughout the city. I have a concern that we go to the location where we're having those major injuries and fatal crashes, and hopefully that mix can come about for everyone's benefit. Richard T. Fanks here, I don't need to talk to him about that issue, we've discussed it.
And, Mr. Zine, if you could just conclude, we'll come back, we have another question.
Okay, I just want to say that my reservations are still there, but in light of the fact that we need to put something into place, someone to support moving forward, and I hope that what we have is a result of fewer deaths and fewer injuries. And again, I just want to emphasize that my passion, my interest in this is saving public lives, not carrying the water for some lobbyist. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaBonde, Mr. Zine, Mr. Smith.
Well, I think Mr. Zine did a very good job of exploring the issue, and the same concerns I have, and I can only reiterate what he said, that if we'd had an answer to the letter we wrote you a year ago, we probably wouldn't have put you through the hoops of these, none of the last three committee meetings. So, I hope you learn a lesson from that, that, you know, we as policy, policymakers need information, and we can't make decisions in a vacuum, and we rely on you guys to give us that information and not just bring it into committee at the last minute and let us make those decisions. So, I hope you'll learn from this lesson that there's an easier way to do it, and that's a cooperative working relationship in the future. I'm not, I'm also a little concerned about the financial viability of Nestor. I was here when LAPD went through the disaster of the MDT process, where we gave a contract to another bidder, and their financial ability was very weak, they went bankrupt, the system didn't work, we couldn't get it fixed. It was a real disaster for LAPD, and I hope we're not making that mistake again. I have been told in committee that this company is a little different financial condition, has a publicly traded company now, and I think the ability to survive the financial condition they're in is much better than the, the company that built the MDT. So, I hope you've taken a good look at that, that you're satisfied that the financial condition of this company is such that we will not have another MDT problem.
Yes.
Okay. With that, I'm going to go along with your recommendation. I do, and I've looked at both of these companies, I don't think we can go wrong with either of them, quite frankly, particularly when they're only three points apart in, in the bidding process. I don't think we can lose. I'm not convinced yet that this is the best system, but I'm going to trust your judgment as the professionals, and I just ask you to work with us a little closer next time. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and Mr. Zine, for your comments. Mr. LaBonde.
Captain, you're the traffic coordinator for City of Los Angeles?
I'm the traffic captain at Special Operations Bureau, but yes.
Are you in charge of all traffic?
No, sir.
Who's in charge of all traffic?
Deputy Chief Michael Hillman is the department traffic coordinator.
But he has many other functions, too. He's a great police officer.
Yes, he is.
Right. I think there should be a deputy chief just for traffic. Just wanted to say that right out there. Traffic is a very big issue, so we'll have to work on that. Mr. Parks, hopefully, in committee and your expertise, your former job, we get a deputy chief just for traffic, just to focus on traffic issues. I love your smile, Bernard, I love your smile.
I'm in agreement, Mr. LaBonde.
Thank you very much. On this issue here, you've done a lot of work on it, you know it makes a difference. I say go forward. Your commission, I saw your commission executive officer earlier, I don't know if they're still here now, but it went through your commission?
Yes, Mr. T. Fanks is still here, yes.
Oh, yeah, okay, good. So, you've worked on this, you've supported this, your commissioners reviewed all this, they made what they felt is the right decision, I think that's important to go forward. Mr. Agura, on these light situations there, nationwide, give us the statistics on how important they are.
Nationwide, what has happened with photo red light enforcement, we've been able to reduce accidents, collisions probably by depending on jurisdictions, probably between 10 and 25%. And the number of people running red lights has gone down dramatically. We've had reduction in violations, it goes down by 40%.
And is this technology advanced to deal with speed, too?
They can track, they actually will show in the box what the speed of the person is going through at the time that the violation is.
But on streets at their speed, could you have photo enforcement for speed?
The legislation doesn't call for photo enforcement of speed, it has to be written by a police officer at this time.
But the state, we should work on the state to do it, because traffic on Coinga Boulevard, north of Hollywood Freeway, I think there's been three or four accidents, some very serious. Just this week in Speed and northbound Coinga through the pass, and I know we've talked to the captain of Hollywood, also reached out to Westbury, if you would please make a remark, a lot of need for enforcement on Coinga. What are the three Es of stand for there, Cap?
Education, engineering, and enforcement.
Education, engineering, and enforcement. Thank you, Mr. Zine, I like that laugh. I just want to say, because that's all it is, education to the public, engineering and enforcement, it's a team effort there and all of that. I thank you for the time. It's absolutely the number-one issue, and I think the commission has done its due diligence. Let's go forward and move on.
Thank you, Mr. Labonte. Mr. Rosendahl followed by Mr. Zine.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Bill Fugliacca to come on up and sit there and take a couple of questions for me, instead of talking around the horseshoe. Could we make room for him?
No.
Wherever he can sit.
I'll sit over here.
Whatever works, Bill.
Sorry, Bill.
You're the numbers guy, right, Bill?
Yes, sir.
All right, so give us some numbers on this. Tell us why the one was rated 1, 2, 3, 4, and then tell me about the financial viability of these groups.
I'm probably going to have my guy come up to speak to the specifics, but the bottom line is, we carefully reviewed this contract. We looked at both the process, we looked at the qualifications, we looked at the merits of the proposals that were presented for this particular program.
Yeah.
And we support the company selected by the police department, Nestor. We have Matt, if you want to give him some of that, because Matt has all the detail right now.
And tell us how solid this company is and how successful they are, and are we betting behind the right horse?
On that, on that particular note, excuse me, I also received some information that speaks to the company's, or questions the company's financial viability. I had, I had problems that another company would, let me just say it, stoop so low that rather than advocating or presenting their own strengths to support the candidacy, they would go as far as trying to trash someone else. We looked at the viability of this company and feel comfortable, comfortable that it has a wherewithal, and I had real concerns with the tactics being used to undermine the credibility of this company.
What are you talking about? What company did what to what?
Without, I received the facts, I'm sure that people have received facts, that questioned the strength of the company we're recommending and took, I think, a tact that, that I personally find.
This was another bidder in the process?
Yes, another bidder. I find, I find real ugly. Without, I don't want to get into too much there, because if I start, if I go down that road, I'm going to be accused of what I'm complaining about right now.
One of my colleagues is saying that one that was second choice?
What I'm, what I'm saying is that my preference, what resonates with me is, is a campaign that speaks to the merits of, of a company or the company a person is representing, and not a trash campaign.
All right, God bless you, Bill, I get you. Give us the, give us the numbers on the group that came in first.
The, Matt Crawford from Office CEO. Nestor Traffic Systems is a publicly traded company, it's publicly owned. They have ample access to additional capital, which they can use to expand their ability to install these intersections and get the program running. We're confident in their financial stability.
Okay, no offense to the past, because I wasn't here, and pretty soon I won't be the new kid in the block when the two new guys come in, but how did we allow something to lapse and let streetlights not to have those cameras? Does anybody give me an answer, how that kind of action happened?
Yes, sir. We elected to let the contract, actually, the contract expired, and we didn't go back to renew the contract. It would have required a renewal of the contract, it had been extended already, I believe, once or twice, so instead of going back to contract with that company, we elected to move on with this. We never expected this to take so long to get to council, number one. Number two is, the quality of the workmanship that was coming out of the, that company was decreasing significantly, requiring us to put a lot of resources into catching up and staying up. So, we elected to shut that down, and we didn't announce it to a public. The cameras were still up, majority of the public believed that the cameras were still working.
But isn't that kind of a irresponsible thing to do, to have the cameras up and it looks like it's happening? It's like what you call mirrors and smoke. I mean, why did we let that happen?
Well, the taking of the cameras down is a different issue. The city is in negotiation with that company to take the cameras down. It was not our decision to keep it up, but frankly, I think it worked to our benefit.
But I understand that, but, but why wasn't there an emergency strategy around here to fix those particular lights or make them work so that they were effective? I'm just curious.
It was just the technology. It was old technology, it was the company's technology, and it wasn't worth the time, the effort, the money, because we thought we were right around the corner with a new contract.
Okay. Now, Beverly Hills and Culver City, I can tell you Culver City has a street right in my district. I thought it was in my district, it's not, it's Culver City. It's at the corner of Centinela and Washington Boulevard, and they snap those pictures all the time, and my folks get the tickets, though Culver City gets the revenue. Is it the, do you know who those people are that do the signaling for Culver City and Beverly Hills?
No, I don't know. They have their own contract.
But did we ever look into other cities and how they've done it?
We looked in many cities, we went out and visited those cities with the different companies. We looked at their systems, we looked at the cameras, we looked at their technology, and that's one of the reasons we came up with Nestor as the best company.
Specifically, did you look at Culver City and Beverly Hills?
Yes, we did.
And did you know who did them?
Culver City has Red Flex.
Culver City has what?
Red Flex.
And who are they?
And they're number two on our list.
They're number two on the list?
That's correct.
I see.
And when we took the field trip out to their jurisdiction, we found that we had a lot of similarities to the problems experienced with our, at the time, present contractor, now former contractor. They have a video camera system from the rear that captures 30 frames per second. The only drawback is the driver's photograph is just one image, and if you don't get a perfect image, if, I can't go to court and say beyond a reasonable doubt it's you, then I've done a disservice to you, the community, and this entire organization. So, in turn, we want to broaden our odds and get a better opportunity to gain more drivers, clear driver's photos.
In other words, you saw a real live actual system that number-two had, you didn't like it, because they didn't really capture the face.
What we saw was that company number-one, Nestor, had superior technology.
Uh-huh.
And we like that, for a cheaper price.
And Beverly Hills? What about Beverly Hills? Who do they use?
Beverly Hills had our former contractor, ACS. See, the benefit of being in the program for four and a half years.
Please.
Is the ability to interact with everyone.
Sure, right.
Our former contractor, ACS, each year would have a client conference, and what they would do is they invite people from coast to coast, from Canada, and even from the UK. Trevor Hall runs our program there with over 4,000 cameras. The opportunity to interact with all those involved, granted they're all from the ACS system and the camera manufacturer, but it broadened our knowledge of the entire photo red light system, gave us an opportunity to interact, to find out the pros and cons of all the systems, the way they have it set up, better way to improve our system, and to find out that they had similar problems we did with gaining a clear driver's photo.
Great, I appreciate that. Homework you did, because obviously we can learn from others and come up with hopefully the best, and you feel that one ranked number-one as the best?
That's why we took the field trips out to outside jurisdictions, and we didn't stop at just one, thinking that, well, you know, hey, they got a good product. We took multiple jurisdictions so that we were assured we made the right choice.
Great, great, thank you very much.
Mr. Zine.
Just a couple follow-up. When do we expect the other cameras that aren't working to be taken down? And is it going to be us or ACS going to do that?
That's a separate issue, but I'll let DOT address it.
Again, Glenn?
We're working with ACS on how to, how to make the arrangements for that.
So, we won't keep them up for months and months and months, sitting there, now they can become items for graffiti?
We have to work, we have to work that out with them.
Well, it's, they haven't been in use for six months, as I understand. Are we going to wait another six months, or can we move forward and have that taken care of in an expeditious manner?
We can, we can do that.
I would appreciate that, because if we start putting additional cameras in at locations where we already have, you're going to have equipment on top of equipment that's going to obviously aesthetically not look good for the community. And the other thing, I just want to clarify, the three Es, there's an order for the three Es. First is we engineer it, and then we educate, and then we enforce. But that's the, the protocol, and I know that from teaching motorcycle school for many, many years. You probably learned that in class, Sergeant Foster. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. That is our last speaker. So, the item is now before us. We have both the Transportation Committee report as well as the Budget and Finance report, which I believe are.
Actually, the Public Safety Committee report.
Public Safety Report is before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
That item has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next order of business, I think, is items 31 through 37, is that correct?
That is correct, Madam President.
Okay.
And those were called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Yes, I think Mr. Parks is AKA Miss Hahn today.
I'm Mrs. Hahn today. Okay. Could I have the CLA CAO and the city attorney representative come to the table, please? Colleagues, as you know, on these issues, we've continued them a number of times over the last several months, pending an ordinance in order to change the way we distribute the funds, but having talked with Mrs. Hahn today, our sentiments are to move forward, but she would like some assurance of if we move forward on these franchise fees, whether, how the ordinance in coming into effect at a later date, whether it's retroactive, do you pick up the funds, we get started? The other issue, how many, how much funding are we losing by not moving forward? Those are the two key issues that she's interested in.
I think DOT has the exact, this is Maria Ranty from the CLA's office. DOT has the exact number in terms of how much we're losing, but it's been substantial since these pipelines have been before council and continued, so the idea is hopefully if we can approve them today, once the ordinance is finalized, which we're continuing to work on, that the new formula would apply retroactively to today. So, the city attorney is here to confirm that we can actually do that.
Let me ask one other question on your comment. Even if we move forward and we've not collected money on the new franchises, do we get an opportunity to where that funding is retroactive, or does it start the day we approve them?
You're saying, can we go back to when they originally came forward for the new franchise fees?
Because I think there are dates, there are dates on them that effectively start the franchise fee. The fact that we've not moved forward, do we then collect based on?
From what I understand, no, it would be the day that the council adopts the new.
The day the council approves them.
Right.
So, we need to move forward on collecting the funds?
Yeah, DOT is here to just respond.
All right.
Good afternoon. Sean Hary with LA DOT. The franchises will be active from the time the city council approves it, so until you approve it, they can be, we can't charge the current fees, and it's not retroactive.
Okay. But also on these contracts, we've increased the fees over the last list, or the contracts?
We have increased the fees, I think, by about 50 or 60%, and I have figures here for what the new franchise fees should have been for each company.
What should they have been? Had we approved them when they came forward initially?
Well, the total, total that we've lost so far is about 500, over $500,000.
Okay.
And these are really based on the order in which the franchises were presented to the council. Some of them are about a year and a half old, and some of them are about maybe three, four months old. So, if you add it all up, based on the current franchise fees, the total up to date or up to last week is about over $500,000.
And if we act today, how quickly will the general fund start receiving those fees?
If you act today, starting today, we will be collecting the current fees.
At what point, immediately?
Immediately.
Okay. All right, what I need to know from the city attorney about the ordinance, how in the new ordinance can we ensure that we will be picking up the fees from the date that these franchises move?
Make sure I understand the question. How will we be sure that we're picking up the fees?
If the ordinance is not approved for several days, or?
Oh.
How do we ensure that, that we can, the ordinance is going to pick up these fees with the new breakdown effective today, that we're approving these franchises?
Well, first of all, Keith Pritzker, Deputy City Attorney, this is really more of a financial question than it is legal one. I understand from talking to your staff that about half of the money currently is allocated to the general fund. To the extent that that money goes into the general fund, it can always be reallocated.
Okay. But I mean, would the ordinance that creates the new breakdown start 60 days from now upon the ordinance going into effect, or can it be worded to where it starts the day in which we have approved the franchises?
Can we, can we write the ordinance in a way that it becomes retroactive to these franchises?
Yes.
Is the question you're asking. I think it would be easier for the council to simply give direction to reallocate the funds for these. I haven't researched that question as to whether we can allocate it retroactively. I suspect that, that we probably could, because it's an internal bookkeeping matter for the city.
Okay. Could you give us some idea of what, what the status of the ordinance is at this time?
I believe that it is ready to go forward, because it's already been approved by our office, so I, I don't, I don't know.
The Transportation Committee made some minor changes to the ordinance when it was presented a few weeks ago. The understanding is that the city attorney has included those, and it's still in their office, so we're expecting it soon to come back to committee.
The one issue, I think Mr. Smith brought it up in committee, that dealt with the, I guess, real property fund, whether we needed some specific guidelines, and we'd asked also to look at the prospects of using the street furniture, whether that was the more appropriate account. Have we resolved that at all?
I think we're, we're still discussing that, but we're almost there, so it's either one or the other. We'll make a decision on that and recommend that, one way or the other.
All right. So, the issue is, we'll work out this internal process, but the issue, I would suggest, colleagues, that we move forward on all the franchises, that we begin to collect the fees at the higher rate, and we'll work out the wording to ensure that we can go back retroactively, or we, whether we reallocate, so that we can make the distribution effective the date that we're approving the franchises.
And we may be able to do that without changing the new draft ordinance.
Okay. So, if we can work those details out and hopefully get it into T-Committee as quickly as possible, we can move forward. Those are the issues Mrs. Hahn was most concerned with.
Very well done for Miss Hahn, Mr. Parks. We do have one's public speaker card by Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sylvia Lenny Hawkins. On number 35, we cannot say yes to our code to do our state franchise pipeline installment under or on top of our streets pavements. These are trains and street buses, a metro, that are on a rail and not a rolling beam of iron. The speed of the metro buses on the streets is not mixed with air brakes. This has caused classing of destruction of death of other trucks and cars after veering the MATA buses, failure in controlling their bus speed. It will be foolish to believe now that Solium's sun-track disc will rule. The weather and earth under has already destroyed everything. We must at this time build escalators on top of LA streets before any more deaths come into existence. No more metro buses, escalators going north to south on Wilshire, east and west on all main streets, with only tracks and natural gas as wheels, and not rails, but built on, with tracks on top, with only United States of America government cars, trucks on the both sides of the street, only.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you very much. My name is Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the items 31 through 37 are now before us. Madam Clerk, the items 31 through 37 are now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Now we're going to take public comment. Mr. Clerk, can I ask the following people to please come up to the microphone? Sheila Bernard, David Ewing, Amanda Seaworth.
Mr. President, can I get 17 forthwith?
Thank you. Seventeen forthwith, and also five forthwith. Thank you. Please, go ahead.
Go ahead. Yes, I'll go ahead. Thank you. Good afternoon, council members. I know you're going to have a good Thanksgiving next week. You're going to have a better Thanksgiving than most of my neighbors, the tenants of Lincoln Place, of whom 80 households are facing eviction, sheriff lockout as soon as the day before Thanksgiving. Now, part of the reason this is happening, the last time, well, before I tell you that, the Grassroots Venice Neighborhood Council, which has had its ups and downs and which you've heard about extensively here, has been reconstituted and unanimously resolved last night to ask our councilman, Bill Rosendahl, and the mayor to contact the CEO of Aimco, which owns Lincoln Place, and to insist that Aimco stop the evictions at Lincoln Place and get back to the negotiating table so that a deal can be worked out which really would benefit all parties concerned. We went to the Plum Committee. Last time I was here, I invited you to come to the Plum Committee. And we went to that Plum Committee, and we got killed there because the lawyers from Latham and Watkins, the ones who brought you Playa Vista, sold you a bill of goods that they were offering this wonderful deal to the tenants that would benefit everyone, and that the preservationists were at fault, that that deal was not accepted. And I'm here to tell you that those are falsehoods. Those things aren't true. The deal that's now offered leaves the tenants at risk of eviction, needs a lot of work, needs negotiation, and I don't mean negotiation with a gun to our heads. Now, I also want to tell you who else is selling you a bill of goods, and that's your city attorney. You are being told that conditions of approval that you place on development projects cannot be enforced, and that isn't true. And if you think this is a legal matter, it's not. It's a policy matter. If you want to have neighborhoods believe in development projects and in conditions of approval that create the compromises between developers and neighborhoods that make development possible, your city attorney must enforce those conditions. Now, Aimco, the owner of Lincoln Place, is subject to conditions of approval according to an appellate court ruling, and Aimco is refusing to follow those conditions of approval, and your city attorney is refusing to enforce those conditions.
If I could ask you to conclude. I'm sorry, we have other speakers this morning.
Yes, I'll conclude. I urge you to get your city attorney to uphold this city's laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Next speaker, Mr. Ewing, followed by Amanda Seaworth, followed by Ingrid Mueller.
Hello, my name is David Ewing. Good morning, good afternoon, rather. I live at 1234 Preston Way in Venice, and I'm here also to, to address the Lincoln Place issue as a neighbor of Lincoln Place. And I want to thank our wonderful councilman, Bill Rosendahl, for being stalwart and really putting a lot of time and effort into this issue. I want to call attention to a somewhat different aspect of it. You know, this is, this is, Lincoln Place involves affordable housing. It involves elderly and disabled tenants being thrown out of their homes. It involves preservation of historic landmarks. But for me, perhaps the most crucial thing for you to consider is that it involves a company that has found a way to use the Ellis Act to extort the planning, to subvert the planning process and extort entitlements from the city. And I think this is a very serious thing.
I don't know why they didn't do it.
Because if they proceed, if they are able to proceed with this...
I understand that. I didn't look at it.
Then you're going to see this all over the city. You'll be able to pick up an apartment building. You'll be able to throw most of the people out, say, okay, well, I'll let some of the tenants stay if you'll do this, and use the gun to those tenants' head as a way to extort entitlements. And, and I think that would be a disaster for the, for the planning process and for the city and for affordable housing in the city. So I also am very concerned that the one person who has stood between these tenants and the street is now being widely characterized as the sole obstacle to the solution to this problem. And if there's one person that the tenants have to thank and do thank for still being in their apartments and who is working tirelessly to make sure that a deal isn't made that can't be upheld, it is Amanda Seaworth, who I hope you'll listen to very carefully when she speaks. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
She's following you, Ms. Seaworth.
Hello, I'm Amanda Seaworth, and I am, I live in the Gregriane Mar Vista Track, the city's first post-World War II HPOZ. I wrote the application for Lincoln Place to the California Register, and I'm pleased to say that the California State Historical Resources Commission unanimously found that Lincoln Place was historic. Now, I'm being characterized as the obstructionist who has ruined this wonderful deal that the developer has offered, and I wanted to respond to that. And Councilman Weiss, I understood, was very interested in it. He doesn't seem to be as interested today. But I wanted him to know as well that I wrote that application on my own. It was not the L.A. Conservancy, just so we have that clear. And that the deal that was offered was troublesome to me on a number of fronts, and it is now bigger than the tenants, and it is bigger than the buildings. It's really about development policy in L.A. And the tactics that are being used here, you have an out-of-state developer who's going to come into L.A. and hold the tenants hostage and say, if you don't give me the concessions that I want, I'm going to evict these tenants. And let's talk about the concessions they wanted. A 27 percent increase in density along Lincoln Boulevard in Venice, all without public, meaningful public review, relief from the height restrictions from 30 feet to 60 feet, all without architectural review of what would be added, and a gag order. One of the things that I want to do after this is to lobby modifications to the Ellis Act. And under the gag order, I could not go to Sacramento and tell the, our congresspeople about how the Ellis Act was being abused by Aimco. I also, if I spoke badly about Aimco in the grocery store to a neighbor, they could sue me and get attorney's fees. This is a so-called wonderful deal. Also, they were only going to have 144 affordable units. For 1,008 units that they wanted, they were really supposed to give 308 affordable units under the track map approval.
And Ms. Seaworth, I'm sorry if you could conclude.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. And also, it has been a real disappointment for the city not to enforce the track map conditions, which clearly provide that the tenants cannot be evicted during the redevelopment. And here they are, being evicted, and no one will stand up for that track map agreement. Yet, you can blame me for not trusting them when they say that they will not evict the tenants. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here. Ms. Ingrid Mueller, followed by Yael Corin.
Hello, council members. Thank you. I just want to give you a very personal account. I've lived at Lincoln Place for 18 years. I sit on the Grassroots Venice Neighborhood Council. I am 62. I am in the group that got the friendly extension until March of next year. None of that group, it's about 75 households, enjoy hearing the knocks on our neighbors' doors at 7:30 in the morning with the sheriff and evicting them. It's outrageous. The Ellis Act abuse, we have been in, under duress for 15 years with these owners, and the Ellis Act abuse is putting us all into some sort of bad mental state, to say the least. I know that Venetians at large love the historic Lincoln Place District and want to preserve that particular community. I know that asking you to please ask Mr. Delgado to enforce the conditions of that VTT, Vennative Tentative Track Map, is maybe asking a lot on a Friday, but this is an emergency. It's a housing emergency in Los Angeles, and I ask you to call the city attorney personally to stop these illegal mass evictions today. Please, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yael Corin.
Hi, my name is Yael Corin. I'm one of the Lincoln Place tenants that is being evicted as we speak. We are waiting for the sheriff to post the five-day notice. You all have these, some of the faces that you can see in front of you, where are real people, a lot of elderly, people that could not come even today here because of health problems and issues. The only way that any kind of a deal can be struck is if the evictions are being stopped now. It is wrong for the city to deal with Aimco while they're holding gun against the city head, actually, because what is happening is that they're holding us like that, we're going to drop, and they're shooting the city in the head. The city is actually, can stop and should stop the eviction as we speak, and the attorney, the city attorney has the power to do it. And I beg you to, as individuals, because I know that as a city council, you cannot do it right now because it's not on the agenda, but as individuals, you can speak to the city attorney and tell him that he can do that. We know legally he can do that, even if he says he won't, even the mayor and Bill Rosenthal, that they know. In addition, I would like you to know that the mayor, Villarosa, has agreed to call the CEO of Aimco, and he is going to try to talk to him. But that is, might be too late. We need, first of all, to stop the evictions so we can sit and talk about what is the best plan for us. And according to the plan of VTT, the only one that exists and that the city approved, we cannot be evicted. And that's why the city attorney should enforce that plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know Mr. Rosendahl's been working very hard on this issue, and as you mentioned, it's not an item before us on agenda today. So we do not have the opportunity to respond to you.
But as individuals, you can still do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you all being here. I'd like to ask the representatives from the South Central Market. While they're coming up, is there someone here who's representing the Woodland Memorial Park Foundation? You are? Okay. You'll be after them. I didn't have a name on it, so.
Good afternoon, city council members. My name is Elizabeth. I understand that the Farm on 41st and Alameda provides many benefits for our community, yet I don't understand why you don't see that. I'm disappointed because the city council is not moving one finger to save the, to save this positive environment in our community. What's wrong, city council? Wake up.
Good afternoon, city council. It's amazing that this young lady identifies her problems that are going on in our community and shocking that this, our elected officials do not comprehend our situation, or for those who do are not doing anything to prevent our eviction from the Farm on 41st and Alameda. We want to preserve this green space for our community and for future generations because Los Angeles has a lack of green space, a lack of green safe space. We are here today demanding that the city and the mayor take immediate actions and find alternative sites for Mr. Horwitz. We cannot allow the destruction of such a positive environment that benefits 350 families plus the community as a whole. Instead of, instead of evicting the farmers, the city should use this space and emulate it throughout Los Angeles. City council, accept your mistake and find a solution now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask the representative of the Woodland Memorial Park Foundation, followed by Velinda Jo Wright.
Hi, I'm Felicia Ford. I'm sorry, I thought I did put my name on there. Forgive me. I come today to say that we have, I represent actually the Woodland Memorial Park Foundation and Corporation, as you know, pertaining to the cemeteries that have been desecrated with our loved ones. Unfortunately, it has not gotten better. We have built a beautiful city here, and we certainly don't want to tear it down. Unfortunately, the family members have been grief-stricken for the last several years. This litigation has been going on for six years. It ended with a $16.5 million settlement. I helped over 1,700 family members with my foundation fill out claim forms, and unfortunately, recently, they have a deadline as of Monday that their notices were rejected and defected. These are elderly people. I want to give you a perfect example of what the defect notices said. Some of them said with regards to family members that were, their mothers may have died prior to them knowing, because they died at a young age, their mother died, but they were young when their, their mother died. They were rejected because they didn't know that their mother had died. I've got elderly individuals that can't get birth certificates and death certificates. I want to say that this has gone on too long, and our family members have been desecrated. We have no idea where they are buried, and we want to know where they're buried. The law firm that has been handling all of these litigations for Paradise Cemetery, Woodland Cemetery, Lincoln Cemetery, and Angeles Abbey is Arias, Ozella, and Gignac. They have misrepresented a wide range of individuals, and they will not come and help them. We do not want, we didn't select this law firm. They were appointed by the court. What is most disturbing is that Mike Arias, of this firm, lead attorney, turned around and took ownership of Paradise, which he was the attorney that distributed the money to the family members. Long and short of it, I will say this. He took ownership of it. That cemetery is now closed. I want to say to this audience, and I know my time is basically up, you have got to help us because we are grieving, and I don't want to rock the boat for a wide range of people to fall over, but the family members need your help at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Velinda Jo Wright. And Ms. Wright, thank you for coming out to the San Fernando Valley this week.
Thank you. I just wanted to wish everyone on the city council a happy Thanksgiving. You guys do really good work, and we Angelinos really appreciate what you do for us. And, well, I was really, you know, I'm so glad I was here today because some members of the Kennedy family were here, and I thought that was just a wonderful experience, and I enjoyed it. And I just wanted to give you some notes that I had about my experience.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here.
And I hope everybody, you know, I heard that on the news, you know, about the traffic lights, not, the camera's not working for six months. So it's really good, you know, because it's a very preventative measure. I actually got one of those tickets on Spalding and Olympic coming from Century City. And that's, it's like, I was a couple of ticks, because I'm very careful when I drive. It's like a couple of ticks, but those are really...
They'll catch you. Thank you very much, Ms. Wright. Next order of business, Mr. President.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those items have been posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused to leave at 11:30 on Tuesday, January 10th, for city business. That meets council policy?
Councilmember Hahn is excused.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Wednesday, November 23rd, and Friday, February 10th, for city business, and motion is required?
That item is moved by Mr. Reyes and seconded by Mr. Smith.
And Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused to leave at 12:30 on Friday, December 2nd, to be excused for the entire meeting on Wednesday, January 11th, and to leave at 11:15 on Wednesday, January 18th. All of those for city business, and all of those do meet council policy.
Mr. Padilla has been excused.
That clears the desk. Madam President?
Thank you. Are there any announcements today, colleagues? Mr. Reyes.
Yes, I just want to let the folks know that the Citizens Committee to save Illusion Park, Memorial Tree Planning, will occur November 19th, tomorrow at 1:00 p.m. at the Illusion Park Arboretum.
Ms. Perry, you have announcements? No?
Adjourning motion.
Adjourning motions. Any other announcements, colleagues? If not, I could ask everyone to please rise for adjourning motions. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I believe Mr. Parks is going to join me in this. I want to adjourn in memory today of a very young man, William Cox... I want to adjourn in memory today of a very young man, William Cox, who was fatally shot Sunday night as he and his friend were on their way to a neighborhood carnival in Jefferson Park. He lived in the 9th District, attended school in the 9th District at the New Santee High School. He was only 14 years old and a 9th grader, and was killed by a gunman who mistook him for a gang rival. He was an active young man who was part of his high school football team. He was a very good person who was at the right place at the wrong time. And we'd like to join his family in mourning his loss. Anyone with information about this shooting is urged to call LAPD Southwest Division at Anonymous calls can be received at 1-877-LAWFUL or 1-877-529-3855.
Thank you.
That's a tragic, violent, senseless murder. Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two adjourning motions. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Eddie Jones, Sr., born February 1938 in the state of Texas, moved to California in the 1950s. He and his wife had five children. He had been a 20-year mason, also a member of the Teamsters Union for over 50 years. He passed away at the age of 67 on November 4th. Funeral service was held in Inglewood Martryary. He is mourned by his wife, 18 grandchildren, eight great-grandchildren. Also, we'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Keely Williams Heath, who is the wife of John Heath, who is one of our primary contractors on the Marlton Square project in the 8th District. Keely was born in June of 1968. She was the only child. She married John in 2002. They have a son, Jonathan IV. She's a graduate of Darcy High School in 1987, and in 1981, she graduated from Cal State Northridge with a bachelor's degree. She passed away at the age of 37 on Wednesday, November 2005. Funeral services were held at Lincoln Memorial Congregational United Church of Christ. She survived by her husband and her son and her parents.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Robert E. Gunter, also known as Bob, Bobby, passed away November 10th. Bob was born in Fresno, California, February 13th, 1941. Lived most of his life in the San Fernando Valley, having lived in Silmar for over 24 years. He was a Finnish carpenter by trade, passed away after six months courageous battle with pancreatic cancer. His wife of 24 years, Sharon Gunter, was a member of Los Angeles Police Department and civilian corps for 37 years. Bob was loved by many and will be missed by all, survived by his wife Sharon, his brother Mel, daughter Sherry, sons Paul, Donnie, grandchildren relatives, and many great friends. I had the occasion to know Bobby. Sharon and I worked together at Valley Traffic Division. A wonderful lady. They had a lot of love, a wonderful life. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. The meeting is now concluded. Could you please call the roll? Mr. Clerk.